It is Tuesday, October 26th, and it is 6:34 PM. I'd like to call to order the Groton Town Council Committee of the Hall regular meeting. Councilors present, Granatoski, Bordelon, Baumgartner, Franco, Overy, Enzepary. Yes, Communications.
Communications.
You might want to move the mic closer, though.
Behind this mask is a person that wanted to say thank you. I wanted to say thank you to all the people that have come out to our meetings, the people that have participated, the council that I've worked with, certainly my family, my friends that have supported me. I especially wanted to say that I think that the department heads that we've worked with, or I've worked with for the last four years, are of great caliber. I think they do their jobs very, very well. We may not always agree, but I think that they're very professional, and they overall do a very good job. I think our town manager has put up with a great deal and hung in there and tried to direct us in the best way, and I think that he does the same thing for the departments. I think he's very loyal to his staff, and that's as it should be. The only thing I wanted to mention that isn't really a thank you is I just wanted to make note of the fact that we've had a great deal of controversy about our school properties and what's happened and what hasn't happened, and I just wanted to point out that as you're analyzing things and you all go on in the future, please remember that four school sales went very well, and we're going to have four very good properties. We have one that has created a little bit of a problem, but I think that in the hoopla about that, it was forgotten that the planning department and the economic department did very, very well, and they have a procedure that I feel works very well. So again, I just wanted to thank everybody, everybody that did support me in the two elections that I ran in, and I'll look forward to being, hopefully, a very small part of the RTM in the future. Thank you very much.
Just for the record, it's 6:37, and Councilor Melendez has joined us. Thank you very much, sir. One, two, three, four, five, six. So we are at seven councilors as of 6:37. Councilor Bordelon, Communications?
Yep. First, I just wanted to thank the town staff for the presentation that we had here regarding how to spend the funds, being part of the Long-Term Recovery Committee. I think it was great to kind of have the boards up and kind of, you know, paint the picture and see where things should go. So that was really great. Also, I just wanted to congratulate the Fitch High School Marching Band on a wonderful home show that they recently had. It was a large turnout, raised a ton of money to support music and arts in our town, and all the volunteers who worked to make the day happen. It's a great asset to the town to have that program. It brings in a lot of folks from surrounding towns and all the people who donated to make it happen. So it was a wonderful event, and now we move on to states this Saturday, New Britain, and Nationals in Pennsylvania on November 6th. So very proud of the marching band and all the staff and parents who support the program.
Councilor Melendez?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that our town police department and the city police department both turned out to represent our community, the Safe Futures fundraiser, and that was heartening to see that we had people from our community there for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so thank you very much to our PDs. And we did have the open house for the ARPA funding, as Councilor Bordelon noted, and the platform is still available for those of you who may not have been able to attend. There's a link on our website, and perhaps that can be noted later on when the video goes up, that we are still taking feedback from the public, so we encourage you to offer your input. And Councilor Zepari, yes, you have the floor, sir.
I'd just like to make note of the fact that we're still in the midst of the COVID pandemic. Numbers have come down slightly, but not really so that we can kick back and say we've got it made. I think that we have to remain vigilant. I think the council should do more. I think we should be mandating vaccinations for our employees. I think we should be taking OLE and making public statements about the importance of vaccination. I would call attention to the fact that Groton has had the second highest rate of infection in the Ledge Line District, second only to New London, and I think we have to move ahead on that. I'd also like to make note of the passing of Dan Stewart in Waterford. He was a man who made great contributions to his community. I think we can always aspire to follow in his footsteps, even though he's not a Grotonian. He is an exemplary man in local politics. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilors Zepari. Mr. Burt, do you have anything under Communications?
Just learning where, is that what we're called, Grotonians?
I'm not sure. I never thought of it that way.
Just to mention, because not everyone checks their emails, just to make sure everybody saw their email yesterday, that we have moved on to the second phase for, to full mediation, official mediation for the Mystic Ed Center project. So just want to make sure everybody has read that.
And the remedy that we would seek is what?
The remedy, we had to apply to the, to the, no, I just blinked. I want to call the American Mediation Association, I believe, for the requested relief is for cancellation of the contract.
Thank you.
Guys are doing that.
All right. Approval of minutes, 2021-731. We have September 28th minutes, October 5th minutes, and October 12th minutes. They begin on page two. Councilor Baumgartner, please.
Yes, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the committee of the hall meeting minutes for September 28, 2021, the October 5, 2021, and October 12, 2021, meeting minutes.
Is there a second? Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Franco. Any discussion on the minutes? Councilor Baumgartner?
Just, there's a series of votes and motions where my name is A-N-D-R-E and just have changed.
Could you give us the date of the minutes and then a page number so that when they're recording or when they're fixing it, they know where to go?
Yep. There's multiple.
Does it start with the September 28th and it runs throughout?
I believe so.
Okay.
I know definitely the October 5th minutes and the October 12th minutes, so.
And Lisa can go through, she doesn't need each other, huh?
Misspelling of your first name?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for that, but thank you for noting it. Okay, seeing no other hands, so they'll vote all those in favor of the minutes. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with seven councilors. Okay, we are on to new business, and we are going to start with 2021-6754, Extension of Appropriation for Groton 2020 School Facilities Plan. This begins on page 27 of your packet, and this is due to an error that was made, typo that was done when the item was originally moved forward, so Councilor Franco, please.
Are we on page 36? Is that what you're saying?
27.
Sorry.
20, it's okay. It's 2021-6754.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve extending the appropriation for the Groton 2020 School Facilities Plan to replace the previous resolution approved at the October 5, 2021 council meeting, to correct the amount of the bond to $184,500,000. I say move.
Second, Bordelon.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Bordelon. Mr. Burt, did you need to speak to this at all?
I think you hit it right on the head for what's gone on. Yeah, there was a, it was introduced by the bond council. It was an original error, leaving a zero instead of a five for the $500,000. So, and part of doing this is just to make sure we're all in the clear for spending the money, but luckily it was caught along the route, so.
That's good. Okay. We will vote on 2021-675, Extension of Appropriation for Groton 2020 School Facilities Plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with seven councilors. At this point, the committee of the hall will recess. It is 6:44. The COW stands in recess, and we are going to go into the Town Council Special Meeting. It is Tuesday, October 26, 2021, at 6:45 PM. I'd like to call to order the Town Council Special Meeting. Councilors present, Granatoski, Bordelon, Baumgartner, Franco, Melendez, Overy, Enzepary, Councilor Heath and Parker are not with us, so we have seven councilors. We do have a quorum. And the new business is Item 2A, 2021-3964, Riverview Avenue Update Setting Public Hearing Date on Page Two. Councilor Overy, would you read that one for us, please?
What page is that?
It's on the second packet that came, it's probably at the very end there. There you go. And it's the second page.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just the resolution for Riverview Avenue.
Here it's at the bottom? Oh. Which, do you want me to read?
Start with, says Recommended Action Draft Motion, Resolution to Schedule Public Hearing Regarding Transfer.
Do you want the whole thing?
Yes, please.
Resolution to schedule a public hearing regarding transfer and sale of properties along Riverview Avenue, Noink. Whereas the public has continuously used a piece of property in Noink, Connecticut, along Riverview Avenue for parking for decades, and whereas it has been determined, the town of Groton does not own a portion of that, sorry, you'll have to get sick for a minute, does not own a portion of the property, and whereas on October 12, 2021, the Town Council Committee of the Hall met in a regular session and discussed a property swap negotiated between the town and the adjourning property owners. And whereas at the meeting on October 12, 2021, the Town Council passed a motion recommending a notice, notice public hearing to be held at their November 9, 2021 meeting, along with an informational session to be held immediately prior to that. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Groton Town Council will hold a public hearing on November 6, November 9, 2021, at 6:30, as well as an informational session at 5:30 to solicit public input regarding the property with trade proposals. So.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Overy and seconded by Bordelon. Mr. Burt, any comment on this?
Just to remind the, just to make sure the public understands, this isn't the, a public hearing for selling property. It's a public hearing simply to gain, to gain input.
This is what the council requested, to gather feedback from the community.
And we will be set up here at 5:30 beforehand to, to provide information to people to prior to the meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, seeing no hands, we will vote on 2021-3960, Riverview Avenue Update Setting Public Hearing Date. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Councilor Bordelon, 2021-675, please.
I'm going to pass.
Councilor Melendez?
Actually, I, okay, this one, sorry, I got confused. This next one's a roll call vote. I was thinking they're all dead, dude. Sorry about that.
Are we good to go with the next one?
Yeah, we're good to go. Sorry.
Okay. Councilor Melendez, could you do 2021-6755, Extension of Appropriation for Groton 2020 School Facilities Plan, please? This begins on page four.
Yes, I make a motion, Correction to the Resolution Extending the Appropriation for the Groton 2020 School Facilities Plan Project. Resolved that the final paragraph of the resolution caption, "Resolution Extending the Appropriation for the Groton 2020 School Facilities Plan Project, Approved by the Council on October 5, 2021," shall be corrected to read as follows. Now therefore be resolved that any portion of said appropriation which has not been expended or financed on the effective date of this resolution shall be extended and reappropriated, provided that the total amount expended or financed as of the effective date of this resolution pursuant to said appropriation under Ordinance Number 284, as amended by Ordinance Number 291, plus the portion which is reappropriated shall not exceed $184,500,000. So moved.
Second, Bordelon.
Moved by Melendez and seconded by Bordelon. Mr. Burt, did you want to make your statement now?
Okay. This is a roll call vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Should I go ahead?
With what?
With the roll call vote.
Oh, I can, I got it.
Okay, you got it.
Okay. Councilor Baumgartner?
Aye.
Councilor Franco?
Aye.
Councilor Overy?
Aye.
Councilor Bordelon?
Aye.
Councilor Melendez?
Aye.
Councilor Zepari?
Aye.
And Granatoski is an aye as well. That is passed unanimously. Seven in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the special town council meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Franco. All those in favor of adjourning the special town council meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. The special council meeting is adjourned at 6:50 PM. Okay. We are reconvening the COW at 6:50. Give me one second, please. Okay. And we are on to Item 5B. This is 2021-116, King Property Renaming, Sasakus Nature Preserve, on page 28. And Councilor Zepari, could you take that one for us, please?
I make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve the changing of the name of the King Property to Sasakus Nature Preserve.
Second.
I say move.
Moved by Zepari, seconded by Baumgartner. And we received quite a bit of information in our packet, and I'd like to thank Mr. Barry for providing all the background information for us. Did you wish to speak to anything in particular, Mr. Barry, or are you just here for questions?
I'm just here for questions.
Thank you very much for joining us. Do any of the councilors have questions on this item? Councilor Overy?
I just had one question, and I apologize to the fact I didn't have a chance to look into it myself, but it was referred to before as the King Property. Was that just the people that had owned it in the past, or was it King's property?
It's my understanding that that was the previous owner. Their last name was King.
Okay. Did anybody ever look to see if it was the King's property?
Do you, may I jump in?
Yeah.
At some point, we were provided with a copy of the deed. I don't know if it was in this packet or another packet. I saw it somewhere. And the person who had transferred the property over's last name was King.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure we weren't making a mistake here, but you did a very nice job with it. I do appreciate it.
I just wanted to thank the groups that worked together to place a trail on that. That was, it's very nice for the western part of town. Councilor Bordelon, you have the floor?
Thank you. I'm excited for this property, and I think it is great to look at renaming this, and I hope that the tradition continues as we move to the Wolf Property as well. I think this is a great starting point, and, you know, with a name like that for a property in its, in, you know, entirety, it's important to consider down the road, looking to achieve grants and funding to clean up the property and remediate the still bullet points that are on this property that need remediation, that are still contaminated, and I think that would drive the point home in its full preservation of the property. So I hope as we rename this, we also reflect bringing that land back full circle and looking at the ways that we can apply for funding to clean that property, to make sure that it can be cherished for years to come. It is along a water point, and the contamination is seeping in that area. Some of the bullet points in this property have been identified, but some of the recommendations have yet to be addressed in its entirety. So I appreciate the name. I think it's a great initiative, and I appreciate you, you know, spearheading this and being part of, you know, making sure it happens, and all the folks that have reached out. So I'm in full support of this. Thank you.
Mr. Barry, did you just want to address any of that as far as the contamination on the property?
And just to mention, I have been talking with Greg Hahn over the Public Works Director. We are looking at that and at options. There's not typically grant, brownfield dollars aren't typically available for this type of property without an economic development component, as in jobs, but I do, there, I don't anticipate them being, or knock on wood, very large items, so we are looking at that. So we'll be back as a possible CIP.
And the other, the other thing to note is that it was accepted by various organizations within town as an, as a appropriate piece of open space, given the condition of the property, and I don't think they would have done that if it was in that dire of shape. Mr. Burt?
Yeah, that's a good point. DEEP also reviewed the full environmental and found it to be fairly minor things that were remaining out there.
Yes.
But still, like, point taken, we should still wrap it up.
Yes.
May I respond?
Are there any other councilors that wish to speak a first time?
Thank you. So just in response to your comment.
Excuse me, excuse me.
I thought you had evoked me.
No, I did not. Councilor Baumgartner?
I'll yield the floor if you have a call.
No, no, go. I thought she looked my way. I thought she was giving me the floor. I apologize.
I was looking around. Councilor Baumgartner?
Thank you. I just want to thank all of those involved, in particular Parks and Recreation Team, certainly, you know, the folks that trailblazed. As many, many may know, just a few years ago, the King Property became open space as a result of the land swap that we had once we built the new middle school at the Merritt Property. And as a result, we now have trails because of those trailblazing efforts on the part of many volunteers in our community, and again, very appreciative of their efforts. But, you know, it goes without question, our council has been committed to supporting open space acquisition, and, you know, I've spoken to countless individuals in our community who have really enjoyed, you know, the trails there. Big thank you to the tribal council, the Mashantucket Pequot Tribal Council, and the elders council for recommending this name. Sasakus, who is the, one of the 17th century grand sagems of the Pequot tribe. He was the tribe, he was the tribal leader during the Pequot massacre, and, you know, a very important figure to the Pequot tribe, and so that is quite fitting. We appreciate this recommendation, and it is my hope that moving forward, we can continue working with the Mashantucket Pequot tribe, the Eastern Pequot tribe, and Mohegan tribe, who again are the original stewards on the land which we live. And so, you know, certainly would agree with Councilor Bordelon, you know, to an extent we can remediate property, would certainly support, support that, but, you know, here to certainly celebrate this name change, and, you know, I look forward to voting yes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other first time speakers? Councilor Bordelon, you have the floor for your second time?
Thank you. So just in response to a comment that was made that, you know, people would not recommend this property if it was not in the greatest shape. That's not my intent nor my, what I was stating. I was just simply stating that I'd like to see the property, it's one of the only open space properties in its capacity on a certain section of town, and it does have lead, arsenic, and many other things that are still leaching out that have not been addressed in the full report. So to say that that's minor is maybe to some, but to me, it's still having a longstanding environmental impact, and I just would love to see that property truly preserved in its full capacity if we can. So, thank you.
Any other councilors? All right, we will vote on 2021-116, King Property Renaming. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. We are on to 2021-399, Community Outreach Specialist Job Description. Thank you, Mr. Barry. And this begins on page 33 in your packet, and, let's see. I apologize.
And just to mention, Chief DeSaro will eventually be here. He had a tree fell on his wife's grandmother's power lines, and he had to go over and do some stuff there, but I know he's on, planning to be here at some point. I'll answer when I can.
I'm sure you can, you can speak to it, sir. So we are back to Councilor Baumgartner, I believe, for 2021-399, please.
Make a motion to approve the Public Safety Community Outreach Specialist Job Description.
Second.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Bordelon. Mr. Burt, did you want to start us off on this?
As you know, the RTM, through their process of looking at some of the options that are available for addressing.
Excuse me.
Best interaction between police and community. One of the things mentioned was the possibility of a social worker, some, a softer approach with the community than automatically just having an officer respond to everything. There are some items that, that could be handled in a more calming manner. Through the, through the Town Council's budget process, the Town Council did put in a full-time position into the, into the budget for this year. However, looking kind of, as we got more into it, looking at the, what's out there and other kind of comparable positions, we do think it was set a little bit low, so we're looking at boosting that salary a little bit to make sure we get someone who's, well, we don't want someone right, you know, no offense, but someone right out of college. You know, we want the police to understand they have good experience and that they can help guide the police in better handling of issues. And beyond that, we did, you know, throw out a broad net, looking at what is in other communities out there. We're fairly ahead of the curve, honestly, so we didn't find a ton, but there are some, some of the bigger cities, of course, have done this already. Now, as we've discussed during the budget process, this is sort of a pilot right now. As, I mean, obviously, one person can't cover three shifts. You know, it's going to have to be somewhat of a flexible position. One thing, though, that, you know, we definitely want to use is with the use of body cam footage, you know, when we see interactions, this person can also, after the fact, look and give some guidance as to how we might improve things in the future in similar instances. So I think it'd be great to really improve our dialogue and interactions with the community.
Could you just speak to the salary differential between what we approved?
Sure.
The range.
Fogging thing again.
We had approved, if we look at the last paragraph in the background, we approved $50,000 in the.
Right, and this is asking for, and then this is also looking at our pay scale too at comparable positions, at our adopted pay scales. So we're looking at $57,401 to $72,612, depending on how much experience they have, and we're not asking for more money tonight, we're asking for the, because, of course, we're late in hiring this position, so the money will be there this year, but we are asking to be set at that salary range.
Thank you for addressing that. Councilor Zepari, you have the floor, sir.
I apologize that I'm not hearing well, there's some reverberation in the sound reflection on our current format, but we just talked about there already being a salaried position of $50,000 for a social worker. Is this new position to replace that, that social worker that was in the budget for 2022?
This is, yeah, this is that position just asking to increase the salary. It's the same position. We haven't filled it yet.
Okay, so it's not an additional employee?
No.
It's an employee with more responsibility and better background. Is that right?
That's the hope with, with the salary, yes. We didn't have a job description until now. We approved a position and the budget and $50,000, and now as we've been able to write the job description and look at what else is out there, this is a request so that we can get a qualified person.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Overy and then Bordelon?
I'm sure when you're doing this, there'll be a lot of things that you're looking at, but I was, I'm hopeful that maybe if this person is not trained already for working with some adults with, I don't know exactly what the words are, but I know they've done the training in the city.
Autism spectrum.
I'm sorry?
The autism spectrum?
Yeah, autism spectrum. I'm hoping that we could take it. Yeah, autism spectrum. I'm hoping that we could take advantage of that and be sure that this person is trained with that. I think it would be an excellent idea.
Yeah, 100% agree.
Okay. Thank you.
councillor Bordelon?
I know that in the past, when I first joined the council a couple of years ago, one of the things, and then the DEI committee came on board, and, but one of the strong things I was for is definitely looking at ways to make sure we're diversifying our community. And, you know, so I'm hoping, you know, I know right now we do not have, you're acting HR, is that correct, John?
Yeah, split between, I mean, a lot of it's done by Catherine, but yes.
So I hope we don't lose the vision as we're still looking to fill that position and make sure that we are, you know, definitely looking to diversify. I think it's one thing to fill a position, but obviously want qualified candidates. But I think it would be really important and be another addition. I know it has been spoken in the past that the city of Groton has a much more diverse police force than the town of Groton. And this would be a great opportunity to infiltrate, you know, and kind of have that accessibility on a different scale. And I think this would be a great position to consider and recruit. So also making sure that we're looking at females as well. So, so the increased range is what you're thinking of the projection for this position over the lifespan of that position, up to 72 or?
Of course, over time, you know, I think the last time, for instance, a non-union pay scale was set was in 17. You know, every, you know, whatever it was, eight, 10 years, whatever, it gets reset. So, you know, it won't stay that forever and ever. It'll eventually, but that's currently, until the council adopts something else, that would be the range. So that would be the top end on that top number. But at some point, of course, inflation catches up in the council. You know, we'll go through a process of looking at salaries.
Nice. And my last question, and I read the, the job description, it'd be interesting or helpful if possible to consider maybe also putting something in there that this social worker could be used to assist the school youth officers in, in the event that there's something needed during the day. There are councillors on hand, but sometimes there's been some incidents at the high school and there need extra backup. So if the cops are called to the high school for an incident, it would be nice to have this social worker that is also trained in that area to accompany. So I think adding a line working with our youth as well in there and collaboration with the school system.
Yeah, it would definitely be available to any of our officers, including our school resource officers.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure that that would be an open part of that is to have it available to our schools. So is there a way that we should add that in here?
I mean, it's, it already, you know, it's already, will be, you know, for any of our officers and wherever they're directed. But, I mean, either way, whatever the council wants to do.
Well, I mean, I think it would be interesting to have it in there for a job description, job description in there to state that also working collectively with our school systems in some capacity.
I would gladly add that.
Thank you.
councillor Baumgardner and then Franco?
Thank you. Certainly support establishing a social worker position within the police department. Certainly, any opportunity we can have to, you know, support really nonviolent or non, you know, confrontational means to deescalate, you know, crises in our community ought to be explored and supported. So certainly support, you know, our, we'll support, be supporting this tonight. My question is, I don't know all too well the qualifications of being a social worker. I understand that there are some accreditations and, you know, qualifications that some folks have to have in order to be considered a social worker. And my question is, based off of this job description, would they need that, that definition of being a social worker?
Yeah. So we also have, you know, a social worker position that's different than this, but similarly, similar qualifications in our, in our human services department. So we do have something to go off of. But yeah, it would need it.
Excellent.
And also, of course, you know, as we're looking at applications, we would also look at what all credit, you know, looking to have that experience with youth, having that, you know, it's great to have more accreditations or other experience.
Wonderful. And I'm really happy to hear that it's the intention to use this individual to review body camera footage. I think that's, that's absolutely great. And, you know, it's my hope over time, you know, certainly, this is a great first step, but, you know, ideally getting at least one social worker on every shift. You know, that way we don't obviously overtax that one individual either. So I had the same problem with my phone earlier. No, 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 nothing further.
Thank you. I was just going to ask if everyone could silence their devices. I wasn't sure who that was or where it was coming from, but I keep hearing a dinging.
A couple of minutes ago.
Were you all set? It was distracting.
It was on during the whole time.
Yeah, blame him, right? councillor Franco, please.
Thank you. I am, I'm very happy with this position and the job write-up. I, I want to notate that the incumbent will work to assess citizens' needs and provide intervention and follow-up services as appropriate to assist client and/or families with issues, which may include but are not limited to domestic violence, homelessness, mental health, chronic illness, substance abuse, loss of job, poverty, suicide, serious motor vehicle accidents, house fire, personal and family adjustment, and criminal behavior, and promote the physical and mental health and the wellness of residents in crisis. Triage, triage, social services and mental health needs. Deliver direct services and advocacy and maintain a strong focus on assertive community outreach and intervention. And may liaison with work with partner law enforcement agencies and other community partners. And I think right there with, with reading that sums up why I think this position will help in so many different great ways. And I'm absolutely in favor of this, and I'm very happy that we're going forward with it. Thank you.
And I would note that that seems to cover the concerns about working with the schools as well, because of the community partners.
Just want to mention that, you know, I really commend the council on adding this position. This is one of the things I'm most excited about that we've done since I've been here. You know, I think it's a great opportunity, and I'm excited to see where it goes in the future.
Any other first time hands before we go to second time speakers? councillor Bordelon, for your second time?
Thank you. I just think it's important too to thank the, the RTM for, I mean, we really propelled ourselves into this by an action of the RTM members who felt very strongly about looking at ways to bring forward an initiative. And that's how the council, even though we're the final action on that, it was grassroots effort from, you know, diverse group of folks in many different districts who got to this point. So, you know, I think it's important as we as councillors will vote this in, I think it's really awesome to see the folks that have served on that committee that spoke and brought the, the initiative forward to us to, to vote on. So I just think it's really important. And also, Sima Evans, the moderator, for allowing the RTM members to have a voice in enacting and listening and advocating and encouraging them to, you know, use their voice and allow for a committee as such to move forward to get to this point. So thanks to them.
Any other first time speakers? councillor Franco, for your second time?
I would also like to thank the police department for actually meeting with some of the councillors, as well as RTM members, and having discussions and hearing some of their input, as well as the community at large with having, that I've had conversations with, who helped lead and direct me into this, this position and bringing it forward and helping bringing it through over to the RTM. And I think the police department and the town of Groton and their insight and the community at large. So thank you.
All right, seeing no other hands, we will vote on 2021-399, Community Outreach Specialist Job Description. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with seven councillors. Thank you. notify the chief that he doesn't have to leave the down tree. All right, we are on to 2021-725, Sustainability and Resilience Manager Job Description. I apologize, I keep losing track of who spoke last. Give me one second, please. All right, so this will be councillor Franco. This is on page 36, please.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve the sustainability and reliability manager job description. I so moved.
Second. I'm taking the second, thank you. Moved by, moved by Franco, seconded by Granatowski.
Can we third?
Okay. This is something we have been working on for a long time, and I'm pleased to say we're finally moving ahead with it. And I am sorry that I won't be around to see the hire, but I trust that whoever is here after me will, will find a good person to fill this position. Mr. Bird?
Can I first ask Mr. Greeley to promote Mr. Reiner? Have you already?
Excellent.
Okay, good.
Good evening, Mr. Reiner.
Good evening, everyone. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services.
Did you wish to speak to this?
Very briefly, I can just talk about the job description. I think pretty straightforward. It's a non-union, 40-hour-a-week position. We are looking for a seasoned professional. This person will be part of the management team within the Department of Planning and Development Services and really looking for this person to move forward with the development and implementation of really a sustainability action plan for the town and all that goes with that. Happy to talk about any specifics, but, you know, we've already been getting the word out there and trying to do some soft recruiting to our different networks because there are a lot of municipalities and organizations that are looking for similar positions now.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Any councillors have questions? councillor Baumgardner?
Yes, I too stand in a strong support of this position. We obviously voted for this, the funding for this position in our last budget cycle. And my question is really for Mr. Bird. But I understand that in previous iterations of the, either the job description or the explaining of-
councillor Baumgardner, can you give it one second?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Bird wasn't here when you started your question?
No, it's okay.
Mr. Bird, this question is for you.
Yes. You know, I know now, obviously, this is a fully fleshed out job description. My question is, you know, considering that it is a position that will require the breaking down of silos, working, you know, across multiple departments within our town, especially public works, would it be more appropriate for this position to report directly to you as opposed to the, the Planning and Development Department?
First, you know, of course, right now, we honestly do not have silos. That, you know, I know that was kind of a case in the past, but, I mean, obviously, that could happen again in the future, but not while I'm here. Part of the reason it's over there is, you know, those are the two, for planning and public works are the two departments they'll, you know, overwhelmingly be working with compared to other departments. That's where basically the, the space is for them. And I, you know, I honestly, you know, with just me and Lisa, I don't have the staffing to spend a lot, you know, a lot of time directing. That's why I really need help with that. So in the absence of having an assistant town manager, it'd be hard for me to take that position on. It could always, you know, it could always be changed in the future. Doesn't mean it has to stay there forever either. We can see how it goes.
So it, okay, so, all right. And then outside of that, so then I see just minimum qualifications, master's degree in planning, environmental science, sustainability and sustainable business. So, yeah, really outside of that, I think it looks great. And certainly want to commend the, the resilience, resilience and sustainability task force for their advocacy for this position and their continued work within their task force to advocate for a better, you know, a more resilient community. So thank you to the chair, Mr. Stever, for being here as well. And no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bird, did you want to reply or something?
I just wanted to concur with that, but also mention that especially Mr. Stever.
Could you speak up just a little?
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to, I wanted to agree with councillor Baumgardner and also mention that the resilience committee put it, actually reviewed the description earlier. This has been ongoing for a long time for this description. They gave some great input and helped to really guide this position.
I want to speak at this point. I concur with the statements regarding the work that our volunteers have done. The resilience and sustainability task force have done a lot of work for the town already, but they need someone on staff to start pursuing specific items for us. They need someone on staff to start pursuing funding to take on some of these projects that we have talked about doing in the past. So I am really happy that we are finally moving this forward. And I look forward to the time when I'm watching a council meeting and we'll see the new sustainability physician manager sitting in front of us. Perhaps a, a young woman on staff would be here to, to represent and start pushing Groton forward. We really need to not delay any longer on this. And there are so many things that can be done. And I look forward to the opportunities that await the community. Thank you.
I just want to say, I think it's most appropriate that this be in planning and zoning. Many of the items, if you read these, those are the expertise that this person is going to need to be able to wrap around some of the things that are going to be asked to be done. I don't, I, I feel that our manager's position is to be the overseer of all our departments and not the creator of one. And I think this is an excellent movement. I think it'll be very productive. We are very fortunate in having the group that we do have that are very interested in making this happen. Sorry it's taken so long to get to the fact of where we're really going to hire somebody. But I just want to say again, I think it's absolutely appropriate that it go to planning and zoning and work in conjunction with other people that understand what we're trying to do with this process.
Okay, seeing no other hands, we will vote on 20-
My head, can I handle?
I didn't see.
That's okay.
councillor Bordelon, you have the floor?
Thank you. I think this is really exciting for the town, being a coastal community, and really wanting to make changes, you know, in our environment on a coastal level, as I, you know, constantly have supported actions in this town to make sure that we're looking and viewing the town through an environmental lens. So I'm excited for this, and I'm excited to see where this will take us and what type of collaboration and grants and different things that they're able to do and bring into the town. I hope the group that has volunteered, that has been, you know, big voices in this town, looking at ways, and the needs of our town, might even have a voice in, you know, looking when we finalize this position, whenever and however that may be. But there's definitely a need and there's folks, you know, I was just looking this up tonight when I was reviewing my packet for the second time. A lot of graduates going to school for this exact thing, and it's definitely a moving, important piece. And we, you know, hopefully we'll get somebody that's really excited, that's going to come in and be around for a while and really be able to direct our town in the right directions, looking into the near future. So I'm excited. And I think this is exactly what Groton needs and the right direction for our town. Thank you.
Any other first time speakers before we go to second time? councillor Baumgardner?
Yes, just quickly, I read that Senator Murphy put out a statement that Groton, he serves on the appropriations committee in the senate, and Groton, should the senate pass the appropriations bill, their budget bill, will be set to receive $725,000 for resiliency projects. And so, you know, I can't stress enough the importance of cultivating and strengthening our partners with our, you know, state and federal stakeholders so that we can really maximize the opportunities we have to, you know, invest in resiliency and certainly our infrastructure. And certainly, you know, I think that those fund, that additional funding will enable whomever serves in this role to have, you know, shovel-ready projects and hit the ground running. So to the extent that we can to, you know, support, write our congresspeople, our, you know, Congressman Courtney, Senator Blumenthal, Murphy, and say, yes, you know, let's, let's pass these bills in Washington to, so we can, you know, help out, you know, this cause here back at home is very important. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, we will vote on 2021-725, Sustainability and Resilience Manager Job Description. All those in favor, please-
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Seven councilors, excellent. We are on to 2021-103, Excess Property Redevelopment Pleasant Valley School Property RFP. This is on page 40, and I'm assuming Mr. Reiner is here for this. And this is for council discussion. Mr. Bird, you're looking for direction from the council tonight before I turn it over to Mr. Reiner and Mr. Brunk?
At least, you know, at least initial steps, you know, obviously, this could be, I'm not sure how large a conversation is going to be, but we are at an impasse right now in terms of our first, our preferred developer is no longer with the project, as you all know. There are a couple of options out there. You could go with the second developer, you could totally redo the RFP process, and then as part of the RFP process, if you chose to redo it, you could also look at, you know, things involving park space, that type of thing. But Mr. Reiner probably has things he wants to add to that, so I'll let him...
Okay, so just before we go any further, if you look on page 40, there are three alternatives here. The first is recommend staff to issue the RFP with changes. The second recommends staff to make changes to the RFP and to bring back to the town council for review and approval, or no action whatsoever. So those are the three options that they presented to us. Of course, that doesn't mean we're limited by those, but these are just several alternatives that we have. So Mr. Reiner or Mr. Brunk, would you like to lead us on this? I'm not sure who would like to begin, but thank you for joining us again, both of you.
Thank you, John Reiner. Again, I can start with this a little bit, and Paige can also assist. So again, as John said, the initial recommendation that the committee made of the potential preferred developer has backed out, and we've discussed this with the council, and they've given us previous direction to re-release the RFP. Prior to us moving forward with that, there were really a few specific questions that we wanted to get some clear direction on the council from. I know that there's been some concerns and some thought about additional park space in this area of town, which we can dive into some of the details on that a little bit, which we'll want to talk about, getting some really specific information on what the council is looking for as it relates to background checks, because there's a whole gamut of things that we can do on that and what we want to have in this RFP moving forward, as well as future ones, the makeup of the selection committee, which I think we have some ideas based upon a conversation that we've had at the previous county meeting, and then if there were any other changes to the RFP based upon members of the council reviewing it. So I think specifically for the first item I had brought up with having a portion of the property to be designated and built by the developer is open to the public park or open space or playground area. In talking with our Parks and Recreation Director, as well as one of the consultants that's been doing work for Parks and Rec for a long time, Kent Frost, who's worked for us, you know, we thought for this particular piece of property, probably the most appropriate use of public space on here would be some type of a playground area, as well as potentially, if there's any open land and trails that could be incorporated into the development, making that part of something that's open and accessible to people from the town at large. And as we're going through this, something that we could put in the RFP is not to be so specific to exactly what we're looking for, but that all, you know, draft language or language to the effect of, you know, "All proposals shall include open space or public playground, park space that shall be open to all members of the community, not limited to," et cetera. So that's something that we can talk about a little bit. And something also along those lines that we've discussed a little bit, the, not to give too much away as far as future negotiations go, but some of the numbers that we were talking about, that some of the offers that were on the table were pretty substantial for the sale of this property, and something that we could do, because this is such a great property from a development perspective. It's on a busy roadway, it has access to water and sewer, not necessarily the ideal place for a large-scale field or park complex, but instead to take some of the proceeds from the sale of this very developable piece of property and look for other properties around the area that could be developed into smaller pocket parks, playground areas, open space. So I think we could kind of get that from...
While Mr. Reiner is frozen, I'm just going to take the opportunity to note that Counselor Parker arrived at 7:26, and we are at eight councilors. Is the whole feed frozen, or is it just Mr. Reiner?
The whole feed.
Mr. Greeley, the feed appears to be frozen.
Do you want to let the police chief know that we've done his...
Chief Asaro is here. I'm assuming he's here for the other items as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Reiner is back, thank you. So you froze, you froze up when you were talking about the potential for other properties and pocket parks, et cetera, and then you froze, so...
Okay. I think that was about it on that item, so I think it would be good to get some feedback on that particular item before we move on to the other options.
Okay, so then why don't we handle this kind of how we handled that other, the committee we were working on before? So we've got four bullets here on page 40. Thank you, Counselor Parker. We are on page 40, 2021-103 Excess Property Redevelopment. We've just begun. So if everybody sees, it says, "Prior to releasing a revised RFP, staff is seeking direction from the town council on a number of items," and Mr. Reiner just reviewed the first one, and we've lost Mr. Reiner. "The specific requirements or language regarding the requirements for a portion of the property to be designed and built by the developer as open to the public park, open space, or playground area," and Mr. Reiner added in, "or trail." There he is, he's back. Is there, I wonder if it's the weather? The weather's really bad, if that's why we keep losing you. Getting strong winds?
Actually, I was there that time. I just shut my camera off for one second as I was having a drink.
So just, let's take this one bullet at a time. Is there consensus that we all agree with that first bullet? Is there any opposition to the first bullet, what Mr. Reiner was stating? Counselor Overy?
Well, I think that this is a good idea, but it really depends on the property and what the developer has to do to the property to make it so that it could be built on. An example of that would be William Sealy School. I don't think there was any large amount of money exchanged because the developer took on the responsibility of taking down the school, getting rid of what had to be disposed of, et cetera. So it's, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself on this one. It used to be that if you did, as some sort of a project, and I was involved in many of them, you had to do a play area or whatever, Groton Heights, Bridgewater, the Meadows, all those different developments, the developer had to do an area and had to put in very expensive equipment, which is still there. I don't know who takes care of it now, but it's still there, and all the different ones that I was involved in. So I think that this is good, but it's going to depend on, there's a lot, there's a lot of things that come to play in a transaction, and we can certainly hope that we can work something out like that, but I think we have to be, we have to be aware of what the, that's not a pure site, that's a problem site, because you have contaminants in those buildings. So it's a bigger question. So that's my thought on number one.
Okay. Counselor Franco?
I would like, if, it depends, like Counselor Overy said, it depends on what goes there. So if you have a manufacturer that comes in and builds a big building with manufacturing, are you going to put a playground next to a big manufacturing building that has a lot of industrial uses going on possibly? So these are things that you can't just simply say, "This is what we want in this property." I think it would be nice, if whatever developed there, that a community may not feel comfortable, even if it's an apartment complex, just say, bringing their family into an apartment complex to go play on their playground. I would prefer if they would purchase some other property within the neighborhood, adjoining neighborhood, for the whole community to go into that and play there, or have open space or a public park there, because then it would feel like it was separate from whatever is going on in that, whatever is going to be developed there. I would prefer a separate area, not on there. And then also, because we're selling it, and it's coming at such a premium price, to then tell somebody, "By the way, you're going to develop, like, manufacturing here, and then you have to put a playground in the middle of it or on the side of it." It just doesn't seem right to me. So I would prefer it to be in the neighborhood, and it would actually feel like a community park. Thank you.
Okay, so we have two opposed to the first bullet, then. Is that what I'm hearing? Counselor Overy and Counselor Franco, yes?
I oppose it to be on their site and making them do it, yes, but I do want those just somewhere else.
Okay. Counselor Bordelain, you have the floor.
Thank you. For me, I mean, we could go bullet by bullet, but I think the three recommendations, all alternatives, these are all great things to talk about, because I think it's hard for me to say which bullet I'm for if I'm leaning towards recommendation number two, which is recommend staff to make changes to the RFP and bring it back to the county council for review and approval, and invite back the other developers that did not, were not the preferred developers. I think that'd be great. But I think that's, so it's kind of hard for me to pick between these four. I kind of think two kind of says that, like, bring it back, relook, so that's kind of where I think it should go, and that would give us a chance then to discuss some of the things, like Counselor Franco stated about the park being embedded, depending on what is actually developed there or not. So it's kind of hard to pick apart the four bullets in its entirety for me if number two is my option, so I'm having a little trouble doing that with that consensus part versus just voting on what we want to do and talking about the bullets. But I think it's hard to do a consensus on something like this, because we can, you know, say on these things, but at the end, we're voting on the three individual things.
Right.
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
But if you are leaning towards the second one, staff needs to know what changes you're interested in them making, so that's why they need to hear from you tonight.
Right.
As to what the objections are, and counselors Overy and Franco have raised their concerns, that's why we need to flush out each of the bullets, because if we're going to send it back and ask them for changes, they need to know what changes we want. Otherwise, this will be, just be delayed and delayed and delayed, and we'll never get the property listed again.
Right, and I think we're in the process of looking at how we're going to redevelop our RFPs, and so that's what I'm saying, is I think looking at the makeup of it and, you know, revisiting all of this, then talk about parks in general, about open space, and how we're doing our whole process as a whole would be, you know, what I would be looking at, so. So bullet one, I think it could go either way, depending on what's there and how we're going to write our RFP and what development we're putting out and what type of RFP we're putting out. I think open safe space should be there, so if it's not there, maybe it's the neighborhood right behind it. If, looking at the map, it kind of, there's a piece that kind of points off, so maybe over here, you know, there'd be access. I mean, there's a lot of options, so, I mean, bullet point one could go either way, depending on the development. So that's all I have for now.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, I support specific language requiring that land there be utilized for, whether it be open space or recreational space for kids or families. I think, and I don't want to speak for the council, but I assumed that was a part of our collective decision, or a piece of our collective decision, to go back to the drawing board, as there were some folks who had written to us, including folks who do live within that district, that it's important to maintain those spaces at that school, should we develop it into housing, you know, in plans that, you know, we have seen in particular, you know, that may have been lacking. So, you know, I hope we do include that in, you know, in this RFP moving forward.
Mr. Brunk, did you wish to speak at this point?
Thank you. I appreciate the conversation, and I think it's helpful and gaining some direction. We, as staff, can draft the RFP however council desires. A copy of the draft RFP is included in your packet, and it's fairly comprehensive, but it does help, I think, when we're attracting development interests and trying to be as clear as possible and reducing ambiguity to the developer. In dealing with development proposals in the past, when we change situations where we demand something that's not referenced in the RFP, or there's a change of understanding, that always creates problems in advancing discussions. So the exact point as to whether we carve out a piece of the town-owned property, or we intend on using the proceeds to purchase other property, that's a pretty significant difference, and I think it would be helpful if we did get some clarity at some point as to which direction we would like to go on that. Clearly, the neighborhood is expressed, that they would like increased park usage and recreation. We've heard that a lot in the theater, but are we going to keep it on this property, or are we going to do it elsewhere? Pretty significant distinction. We're going to need some clarification on that before the RFP goes final.
Thank you, Mr. Brunk. I'm going to take an opportunity at this point. I agree that we should specify that we would like either open space or playground area included in the RFP. I would prefer that we do, as you, I think you used the term a carve-out, for a section of the property. Perhaps the area that is currently the playground could just be resurrected as a nice new take care of paying for the equipment on that playground. But I prefer that we do that and we keep it in that area. I think it should be noted in the RFP when we release it that we are expecting something for the community, as Counselor Overy stated. While this is a property that may have some concerns as far as taking it down, it is a prime piece of real estate that I think they will be very happy to have in that area. I don't think they'd have any trouble renting living space there because of its locale. And I do think it is reasonable to expect that they would do something for the community. So I am in favor, I concur with Counselor Baumgartner, as to including open space or playground area as part of the RFP. We haven't heard from, let's give the opportunity for first-time speakers, and then we'll go back, because we have several counselors that wish to speak twice. So any other first-time speakers? I'm looking for counselors at Perry. I don't see a hand. Counselor Parker, okay. Counselor Bordelain wanted to speak, and then Counselor Franco.
Thank you. I think it actually would do us some justice to actually include both. There's a way that we can put the language in there, and, because I'm a firm believer in open space, but I think the cry from the neighborhood in that area and the folks having it, we haven't reassessed to ask them what they minded if it was moved a little bit off the main road and maybe in a different area. So I think there's a way that we could actually achieve both aspects of this by putting the language in both, and we work out the fine details as we move through the development agreement for that area. So there could be language that states exactly what is here, but also maybe there might be an opportunity to, you know, resurrect open space somewhere around that community. But I think we need to bring it back to the drawing board, and I think bringing the public back around the table now that the developer is no longer on board, and kind of asking, "Did you really want the open space on this area with the high industrial, or would you be comparable to move it elsewhere?" So I think if we keep both options in here, it leaves us available and ready to do whatever will fit based on what comes down the pipe down the road. I also think we should be going back to the community and allowing them to be part of this discussion. It would be great to have had this in collaboration after some type of public comment, or, you know, a chance for the community to react so we could hear their comments tonight. But, so with that, I think adding both doesn't, you know, it allows us to have both options on the table.
When you say add both, what do you mean?
So... So I'm saying that the bullet one and the option to have the portion of the property be designed and built by the developer and open, all of it, like what was discussed, meaning on the property or off the property, if that, in that same district area location.
So you favor bullet one?
I favor bullet one of the language. The wording on this kind of, I also think it should also say, "and" community input. The wording on this kind of, I also think it should also say and community input. So if we're doing this for the community, I think we need to bring them back around to discuss how we want to achieve that open space that they spoke of. So I think it's hard today when we don't have the chance and the availability for folks from that area to speak on behalf of their area and location. And that was one of the other things they wanted, it was an opportunity to be around at the table. That's one of the things we're also talking about, looking at our RFP developments, is having community input before we make decisions as a council. So I think it is important that we have that chance to do that and we have not. So I'm having trouble, like, weaseling this down and limiting things without knowing. So, so my question is, John, is there a way that we can have some public input on this?
I mean, it's entirely up to the council.
I think so.
Mr. Franco.
So I'm in favor of public input to be part of this process in RFP development. I think having the public around the table to discuss the planning of building a new RFP for that area, I think it's important to bring our community at large before us. Thank you.
Mr. Reiner, I see you have your hand up. Did you wish to speak at this point, sir? If not, I'll go to other councilors.
I just wanted to bring up two quick things. One, a comment that Councilor Obray had said, all multifamily development, all new multifamily development does have a component of recreation land associated with the new development, but that land is usually not open to the public. So I just, that's something that happened with all multifamily, but isn't necessarily open to the public. So if we were asking the developer to do something to the, for the public, that would be in addition to. And if we were looking to have a developer build something either onsite or offsite for some type of public use on this property or adjacent to it, I would just discourage that we specifically carve out a specific area because that might then limit the development. But instead to give them the creativity, that has to be, to come up with a plan that also the council, the way that we do all these contracts, is that the council has to approve of the initial and of the final design of the plan of what the developer brings forward prior to them submitting it to the Planning and Zoning Commission so that the next council would have a bite at that apple too.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner.
Thank you.
We have two councilors who haven't expressed an opinion on this, or actually three councilors, Councilors Zepary, Melendez and Parker. Do you wish to weigh in on the first bullet? Councilor Zepary, did you wish to weigh in on the first bullet?
No, thank you.
And Councilor Parker?
Not at this time.
Okay, so at this time, then we'll go to Councilor Franco for her second time.
So can you repeat what you said about this property and is it conducive to apartment complex? Is that what you said? Or it is not conducive to an apartment complex?
I'm sorry, was that directed at me?
Yes.
Oh, no, this property is conducive to an apartment complex. What I was saying is that if we cut out a specific area for a playground or a park, that might impede the development as opposed to giving a developer the ability to design a park or playground area on the site conducive with how their development is laid out.
And since you're a planning expert, is it, what do you usually think a neighborhood feels if there was an apartment complex? Would they feel comfortable to go into an apartment complex to use their playground equipment with their children? Or would they feel more comfortable with a playground within their community that it seems to be open to everybody?
I think the second option is where you probably see more people utilize it, but I do think there might be an opportunity for both or maybe the best option is for some creativity because, you know, through this conversation, something we could ask a developer to do is to focus on building a small public, you know, park, pocket park playground either onsite or offsite, but within very close proximity. So they might be able to find another piece of property nearby that isn't as conducive for high-density development like this parcel is. This is zoned for high-density multifamily development. And there might be another available property not too far from here that would be more of a neighborhood park that might be more conducive to some of the neighborhoods in the area.
When you sent out the RFP, does it specifically say we're looking for an apartment complex or is it open to all types of different development on that property?
It's open to all different types of development, but this property is zoned for multifamily.
So let's just say...
Other uses are allowed in there. And they could always request a zone change, but the property is zoned for multi.
So let's just say, because it's nearby to EB, then a manufacturer, maybe a steel building of some sort, you know, wanted to buy the property and put up an industrial building, would that be conducive to have a park or a playground next to it? Or possibly UPS or FedEx wanted to have a shipping zone there, a hub, would that be conducive to have a park there?
We're talking Pleasant Valley, right?
That would probably not be conducive to a public park there.
Pleasant Valley, okay.
Because it's not just for apartment complexes, it could actually have other things come in there. Like, it could be UPS, it could be FedEx.
I just never think of them as being close to EB, that's why I was curious.
It's in Groton, meaning it's not...
Right, I got you.
I think the most important thing that we're trying to avoid is kind of what Mr. Brunk had raised, is we don't want to move the goalposts after we've already released the RFP. So there may be some language that we could put in the RFP regarding the town's desire for a small pocket park on this site if it's utilized for residential development or offsite or other creative opportunities that the developer could come up with that would be approved by the town.
When you, when, somebody wants to develop a neighborhood development and they have to put aside a certain amount of open space, is that correct?
For most subdivisions, correct. They can either put aside open space or donate money in lieu of.
So why don't we have...
But for multifamily, they actually have to create recreation onsite amenities for their residents.
Right. So we haven't heard from, we have talked about neighborhood parks, but we have not gotten a response from Parks and Rec and they were going to be working on this to figure out where, everywhere in the town that we may have a need in the actual locations. So this neighborhood, we don't know where the actual locational need is. I mean, being right next to the main busy road, is that the right location or further inside the neighborhood into where it's more residential inside there? We're not really sure. So as you just said, if there was a subdivision, they would either have to do it onsite or they'd have to give money in lieu of. So depending on whatever goes on this property, we should probably do the same type of thing. And I honestly just don't think if you build an apartment complex, people will feel comfortable to bring their children into an apartment complex the same as they would as a neighborhood park. Thank you.
I kept hitting the wrong button on this, sorry. Councilor Melendez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so I think I would prefer, I mean, when we put out the RFP last time, the number one selection was housing. So I'm thinking if we put out this request for proposal again, I would prefer that it be another housing development for two reasons. One, it's already zoned for that. And two, we already had a presentation saying how we need so much more housing in Groton, you know, to keep up with demand. So I'm going to work under the assumption that a housing development will be selected. And with that in mind, I would definitely be in favor of the first bullet point, you know, giving the developer creativity to do with it what they want. I think the property is also a great idea, but I think we could sort of use the funds that we raised from selling the property to purchase that on our own. So we'd get both and, yeah, that's where I stand right now.
Councilor Hiet apologizes for missing the meeting. I just needed to see, because we are at four in favor of the first bullet, two opposed and two haven't expressed an opinion. So the two that have not expressed an opinion could sway this. So if either of you would like to chime in, we can go back to Councilor Baumgartner for a second time.
Yes, just two brief comments. One, with respect to what Councilor Bordalyn brought up, completely share her sentiments. Just reviewing kind of the, those four bullet points, I would imagine in the last number four, any other changes to the RFP and selection committee recommendation process as directed by the town council? I think that's probably the area where, you know, we're going to talk about, you know, community inputs and certainly, you know, what you articulated is included in that process. And then in terms of what can go on the property, I know there's discussion with Councilor Franco about, you know, the, you know, commercial or different types of uses. I understand that property is zoned as residential, residential multi-unit. And I guess my question would be, as a result of that zoning designation, really we are confined to choosing residential, a property with a residential component, is that correct? Or development with a residential component? I guess that there would be a question more for either Paige or John.
Did you hear his question? Councilor Baumgartner's question?
Is your question that you think this would be more of a residential development than a commercial development?
As it's zoned residential multi-unit?
I think the end result will most likely be a multifamily development. That's what we've seen, a great interest from developers in Groton. I think it's fair to say that's most likely what we would see get developed on the property. I could add to that as well in light of the recent housing study that was released that showed the strong demand for housing over the next few years, which was greater than what we anticipated. I think that's going to further drive interest in the limited number of properties that are available for housing development, including town-owned properties.
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so at this point then...
Madam Mayor, I just had a quick point of clarification.
Point of clarification?
Yeah, on this bullet point, so there's no way to change it other than what it is. So as we're getting a consensus, I support it the way that it is, but I was asking adding if, you know, the will was to have it also in another area, so...
So Councilor Bordalyn, as we go through, you have opportunity to add any other changes, as Councilor Baumgartner pointed out, any other changes to the RFP and selection committee recommendations that comes down to the fourth bullet point. So at that point...
So we can revisit this one there.
But we're going to, we're going to go with number one right now. And right now we have a plurality of the council that favors bullet number one. All right, so we're on to bullet number two. Specificity on the topics to be reviewed via background checks, such as felonies, misdemeanors, et cetera. What else? I'm not sure quite what we need on that, Mr. Reiner?
I don't think other...
I asked them and they both declined. Mr. Reiner, would you like to comment on what in particular you're looking for for the second bullet? I'm not quite sure I understand.
Sure. So background checks can go in a lot of different ways. In talking with our police chief about this a little bit, what do we want to look for? Do we want a standard background check? Are we looking for felonies? Are we looking for misdemeanors? Are we looking for a period of time? Are we looking for the past 20 years, for their entirety of their lifetime that's part of the public record? Are we looking for internet searches? Not all items come up easily. And depending on the type and level of background checks, some things may or may not surface. So, you know, are we looking for speeding tickets or are we looking for things that are much larger in breadth? And that's, we want to make sure we have clear direction on this from the council so that we're meeting expectations.
All right, very good. That helps. I think that helps. Councilor Parker?
So, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So on the background checks, yes, look for felonies. Misdemeanors could, would it be possible if Chief Azara could come up? Is that a problem?
Chief Azara, are you okay with coming up to the mic, sir?
I just have a quick question, sir, if that's all right.
We're fortunate that he's here this evening because he's here for another item, but we can, we can pick his brain if that's all right with you. Thank you for being here.
Hello. Thank you, Chief. Just a quick question about the misdemeanors and doing background checks. This would be similar to, it's not a tax credit report, it would be something else. So misdemeanors, a speeding ticket would be considered a misdemeanor?
That's not, that's not a crime.
That's not a crime? So could you explain what the misdemeanors might be so that everybody...
Breach of peace, simple assault, things of that nature, criminal mischief, those might be misdemeanors. Just, I need to clarify one thing. The police department would not be able to run some of these records checks. We're able to run through NCIC in the Connecticut Criminal Justice Function, the collect system. We can only run those for criminal justice purposes. We can't use them for pre-employment outside of criminal justice.
And that's where I was getting ready to go with that. That's why I want the chief to explain it clearly.
Mr. Burt wanted to chime in.
We do have a company, an outside company we use to run these background checks. And another example of misdemeanor would be bribery.
So...
I, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, you know, I don't think we should rule anybody out, but I lean towards, the report gives us misdemeanors anyway, so I lean towards, let's see that information and then make a decision from there.
So I would also include Google searches, any online internet searches. So definitely felonies because it could be a very serious felony and we do not want that because it'll look bad for the town. And, yeah, so I'm in favor of the backgrounds, felonies, misdemeanors as he's explained and knowing that the police cannot look for that information and that you have a company that can pull that information up, so...
And Councilor Parker, just to go to something that Mr. Reiner was also requesting, how far back do you want them to go to look for these things? So is it, you know, go back 10 years or is it? I'm not, I'm not sure, Mr. Reiner, what the time period was. Or how far back does this company go, Mr. Burt?
I think it's everything on record.
Okay. So then I'm going to say 15, just to be a middle...
Generally, your criminal, if you, if there's a criminal history check, it's going to have whatever is on there that hasn't been expunged.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Bordalyn was next and then Baumgartner.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I think it's really important that misdemeanors are on there because as we saw, you can plead down to, so it doesn't lessen the crime. If you have a great attorney, money walks and things can be pled down to lesser or expunged down the road if you have the means and, and great legal representation. So I think from the reports that I've seen in my own experience, everything's going to be on there. And I think at that time, we present the report to the, to the council or the decision-makers on the letting the developer and we can pick them apart. I mean, you could have things that don't pertain to, not saying I'm for drinking and driving, but I'm saying like, what if this person had a past at one point with alcohol use and he had a few DWIs? Is that going to preclude him from 20 years ago of being a great developer? We have to look at the stuff that pertains. Bribery is definitely something. You know, money embezzlement is definitely something, certain felonies. So I just really think that taking the report, and I don't think we really have to pick it apart now, I think every report is going to present itself in its own unique situation. When you look at it and pick it apart, it will then present, here we are, and the red flags will be there at the time for the council to review. But I think what we were moving towards was at least having something to look at this time. And we didn't have that before. So I also think the background check should not just be criminal. I think it all should be like, how did this developer achieve goals in other communities? What was their partnerships like? What was their working relationships like in other communities? Meaning, if they had deadlines and goals, did they meet them? A lot of the stuff is in the paper in the local areas and towns where they develop and you'll be able to easily find this stuff with quick Google searches, property that, you know, was planned to be completed in 10 years if it's not the developer's fault, but maybe they didn't have the funds secured properly. So I think it just needs to be a robust blanket invest, you know, background check and each individual thing will be unique to the developer at the time. And that's where I think, this is kind of tough tonight. We're picking apart the Pleasant We're picking apart the Pleasant Valley property, but we really haven't set our own RFP process, so I think it's kind of hard to do it in real time with this development, because we really didn't do a new RFP process, which I think would be, allow for longer discussion and process to be able to put forward. But since this proper, property has no developer at the time and we're trying to move forward, I think it's important that we don't move too fast in this small confined council meeting and make wrong decisions and not really kind of vet this in its entirety. So I, I kind of feel uncomfortable rushing through this when we don't have an RFP process in place and picking this one apart and saying, we're going to set the precedent now on this one. I don't think that's what the community wanted. I think they wanted a full deliberation of the process. Thank you.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Definitely. I would agree, we should certainly assess the criminality of, you know, the specific, you know, instance where they ran afoul of the law. Certainly want to differentiate, you know, certain misdemeanors and felonies in case, you know, for counsel, fifth degree conspiracy, bribery, class A, you know, pleading down to a class A misdemeanor. You know, certainly, that, that's where we should not be engaging with, you know, with those types of unscrupulous developers. But in terms of, you know, you know, someone who may have, you know, caught smoking a joint back in the day when it was illegal, certainly in, you know, come to find out they've, you know, been contributing members of society or now, you know, successful developers and want to build in our community, part of our community, you know, I think that shouldn't preclude them from bidding on a property or issue, you know, responding to an RFP. So what I would recommend is just, you know, I guess, can, John, it's not a recommendation, I'm sorry, John or Paige, can you kind of speak to that, that differentiation of, you know, of those, you know, different crimes and, yeah?
Did you want the chief to, or do you want Mr. Reiner to?
Uh, Mr. Reiner.
Mr. Reiner?
My forte is not the difference between types of crimes. I would actually turn probably more towards the chief on that. If you are looking for, we're looking for direction on what type of process, and what you want us to look into.
Yeah.
And if that is felonies, if that's misdemeanors, doing full background checks with a specific firm, we can do internet searches and see what we can bring up with preferred developers, as well as, you know, their resume. Those are all things that we can incorporate into the RFP process.
No, and I have no doubt that the chief would be able to answer that question, but, you know, you, you are at the negotiating table engaging with developers. You know, I, my question is, you know, if you're soliciting an RFP and receiving, asking for a response, you know, in order to properly vet these people at a bare minimum, what type of people would you want to be working with? I mean, it's, if this person, you know, if they've engaged in bribery in the past or, you know, have a spotty track record and ran afoul of the law because of the work of being a developer and being a businessperson, obviously, we wouldn't want to work with them. And so I guess I want to have a better understanding of what, what you're comfortable with, dealing with, because I personally wouldn't want to be working with anyone who has a record of, why call it crime? And who, especially giving public property in many cases at a, a, you know, a discount so that they, they can obviously develop... ...benefit to enrich themselves. And so if we were to do that, I want to ensure that the people we're dealing with are, you know, are law-abiding citizens.
Yeah, I think that's an easy one to get behind. Where things get a little murky sometimes is many developers have been sued by people for some of the developments they've done. There's often a lot of litigation. So that's where things can often get murky and things turn into he said, she said, how, what court cases are still pending or not. That's where things can always get a little funny. And, you know, not all developers are created equal. Some may have done things in their past life that they're not very proud of, and then they have a very successful track record afterwards. I think if we looked throughout the larger Connecticut, New England region, we'd probably find a lot of developers that maybe had made a few bad choices in their life, but then later on corrected it. So I think that's something we have to flesh out. But really, at the end of the day, all of what is brought to the council as a recommendation on a developer, we're trying to just find what that baseline is of what you're looking for. Obviously, I think there's certain things we're looking for and not. Paige, I don't know if there's anything more you wanted to add to that?
Thank you. I think it's a careful balance. It's a two-way street when we're marketing our properties and we're attracting investors to our town. It's not just about them being fortunate enough to come to Groton. We're fortunate enough to have them interested in bringing in resources as well. Clearly, we have the right, demand, whatever information, certifications, we need, background checks. It's more, I think, important to have clarity as to what our expectations are, rather than who do we, who do we feel comfortable doing business with? Obviously, we would like someone with integrity and professionalism, but unfortunately, as John stated, many, any developers have some blemishes. They're, they're not necessarily speed clean, and I'm certainly not characterizing all developers, I'm not, but certainly developers that are coming into our town, working on private property, simply come in, they get the zoning approval, building permits, off they go. We need to certainly meet a certain standard to make sure that the town is protected and that we're dealing with a development team that we're comfortable with. But at the same time, we also have to realize we haven't been known as a business-friendly community, and we are trying to attract investors, do the right thing within our community. So I think that's why we're looking for the clarity. And if we simply want to say, we need the background check, and we take it from there, that's, that's fine, but we were hoping that we could refine exactly what we're looking for, because that question's going to come up. Developers have said, what are you, what are you looking for? You don't trust me? You don't think I have integrity? They do take it personally. They get offended. And so it is somewhat of a dance, a two-way street, as we're trying to entice the developers and build our community at the same time.
Counselor Bordelon, you have about 10 seconds left, if you want to follow with anything?
Yes, I'm all for second chances, but I definitely agree, we need to establish a baseline, and it is my hope. Time's expired.
Okay.
I just want to make sure, I think you said Bordelon, but I think you meant Baumgartner, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Excuse me?
Yes.
He called him Bordelon.
Bordelon.
I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
I'm looking at my...
Yeah, I was just like, wait, I have five seconds.
I apologize. Mr. Burt wanted to speak, and then myself, and then Counselor Franco.
I just want to mention, you know, in terms of what we're doing tonight, it's solely for a draft RFP, RFP to come back to the council for further discussion. It's kind of a starting place. We're pretty much ready to bring the, you know, we started the process for RFPs at the last meeting. We're ready to bring that back right away, so I imagine they'll time out together well. And as you're working on those, you could choose to finish up the one and then see if there's things from that you want to apply to the other. And in terms of criminal background checks, I think there is, I've, I've been checking around a lot on how other places do it, and definitely the way to do it is at the RFP level, make it clear, because if, I think part of where people take offense is you get down to the preferred developer and then suddenly they say, you know, I want, we're going to do a criminal background check. That's definitely where they seem to take offense. But if we make it clear up in the, upfront in the RFP what the expectation is, I think it's not as big an issue. And if you don't get people, you can always re-look at it.
Okay, I'm going to take a turn here, start my clock. One of the things that I think is necessary to find a way to take care of is if you do a background check, but you discover later that a record has been expunged. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a criminal justice professional, but we need to do whatever check is necessary to figure out if there has been a record expunged. So whether that's something as simple as a Google search that the firm you would hire would take care of, or if it has to be something more in-depth, I don't know how you go about doing that. You know, is it like 50 states and you have to go through every single criminal justice system? Or, Chief, do you, you raised your hand, do you have an answer for that?
If a record's expunged, it means it never happened. It, it doesn't exist. Every record of that in the criminal justice system that is in the care and custody of any official entity has to be destroyed. So if, and there may be news media stuff, but, but there's not, you know, anything that would be in the possession of a government agency has to be destroyed.
So then, so then I misspoke when I used the term expunged, because that would, as you said, disappear. So then we need to find, I don't know how you do that. How do you find the, the, you know, old media that relates to the records that no longer exist, which is a very real problem? So whatever we have to put into place to do that is what my concern would be. And I'm not sure if that's as simple as cert, you know, just running web searches.
Yeah, all we can do is an extensive search and see what we can find, but I think also part of what we'd want is maybe some sort of affidavit that they sign on, on their background, that, you know, they've revealed everything there is, and that we, you know, reserve the right to then pull out if something else shows up, that type of thing.
So, so is that something Mr. Reiner, Mr. Brunk, that what Mr. Burt was just speaking of? Could that be incorporated into this item as far as the background check, the signature on an affidavit that they've been upfront with us and none of this stuff exists?
Sure, I think that could handle it. Again, we're looking for what is the level of comfort from the council and what the council is looking for. So if that's something, you know, in addition to a background check, looking for felonies and misdemeanors, internet surge, and a signed affidavit, that, you know, we could work with our legal team on that specific language. If the council as a whole feels comfortable with that, I think we've covered our bases.
So I would feel, if, if that were incorporated into it, this, this signature on an affidavit that would allow us the ability to void any agreement, I think that would be something good to include in any RFP that we were doing. That would provide a safety, safety valve for the community, I think would be a good way to go. Okay, so I have Franco, Parker, Melendez, did I see your hand? Bordelon? Okay, so Franco, Counselor Franco, I'm sorry, you have the floor.
Thank you. So we have learned that many states or some states don't report misdemeanors in a background check. So even if you do a background check and you can say, hey, we want to see misdemeanors, they're not going to maybe show up from many states. So that's not, there may be issues there that we're not going to find. I have issues with possibly doing Google searches and looking into articles, because as we know, reporters don't always report everything correctly. And if you're going to take a reporter and say that's fact, and then you're going to hold it against a developer for some reason, there's legal issues there. So I don't know if potentially doing Google searches is the right way to go to really hold something against a developer.
Well, in the instance where, like, that we're all familiar with, the Google search did reveal the full court record, you know, so it can get some accurate information, and it just gives you a line of questions, too. Doesn't mean you're going to automatically rule it out. Obviously, anything we do, we've run through the attorneys, so...
So Eileen Dugan is here. Can she come up and potentially discuss this then? Because I will say that working in HR, there are some serious issues about looking at people's Facebook accounts and looking at things and holding this against one of your staff members. So I'm just saying that I think that there's a lot of potential issues of doing Google searches, but that's me.
I mean, I think I'd agree with that in general, that there are issues. Oh, I'm sorry, did you want me to...
I think, and it's a good thing you're here, perhaps you can provide some guidance. I think we need to be very careful about the things we're saying this evening.
Fair enough.
Yep. Fair enough? And that's not directed at you, that's directed at all of us, and I think we've been kind of leaning in because of, of experience, but just, I would caution everyone to be careful and please feel free to jump in and whenever you need to.
I don't quite understand at all what's going on here and why you're being advised to be careful from the mayor. I'm not sure what's happening here.
I'm not advising the attorney to be careful, I'm advising the counselors that we should not be bringing in to bear anything that we have in our current circumstances and open it for discussion this evening.
I don't think I've...
I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing...
We're discussing an RFP.
You, Counselor Franco, I'm just asking everyone to be mindful of the situation, and if you don't feel that that's appropriate, then speak freely.
So I think on a, on a generic level, obviously, there are a lot of issues to deal with. You're talking about, for example, HR issues, right, and what you've seen, and certainly I've seen those issues as well, and trying to sort out what you can, what you can't use, what's been approved on, you know, by, by somebody signing off in the employment context on a, on a background check notice, which perhaps would be similar to what we have here. I really can't say to you that this would be okay, this wouldn't be okay at the moment as I sit here, but what I can say generally is, do we have to be considerate about the steps that we're taking? Yes. And I think Mr. Reiner said before that, you know, as we look through this, he would talk to the legal team about what we can or can't put into a disclosure. And I mean, I think that's all, that's all fair. I just, I don't want to commit something, you know, that I, that I will be saying next week, oh, wait a minute, perhaps that wasn't the best, best way to go. But what I can say again is, yes, there can be pitfalls and concerns, and we'll need to be careful of those as we go forward.
So are you saying that Google searches, looking at articles, reading up on a developer by something that as a reporter would report, is something that could be used as accurate?
I don't think that's quite what I was saying, what I, what I was saying...
No, I'm just asking because simply some other people here are saying we should Google search and read articles and see if they've done their work.
And there could be...
And that's what I'm saying, I don't know if that is considered an actual investigative reporting that we can trust.
I, I think we might be throwing around, we're talking about different, different terms that may or may not apply in this context. For example, and, and I'm jumping for a moment, you know, if we're in the employment context, we might have to look at the Fair Credit Reporting Act and have certain sign-offs on that, et cetera. I can't tell you exactly what the parallel might be here. So, you know, when Mr. Reiner was talking about, oh, what is this going to look like, you know, if we're, if we're asking for felonies, if we're asking for misdemeanors, if we're asking for this, if that, what will they sign off on? What will they approve of? I think that might, you know, go into perhaps what it is that we can actually look at, just like it goes into what we look at when we do HR stuff.
So what I would suggest that we ask our attorneys what we should be, what would be allowed and what would be comparable to possibly, like, HR, what's comparable in the development, development world with construction and of that nature, what is typical to use? Because I don't think any of us sitting at this table is experts in that field that can say, this is what we should or should not do, and then illegally they could, our town attorneys could come back and say, well, you're not allowed to do many of these things. So I don't think we have enough information to sit on this bullet point and decide at this moment.
Mr. Burt?
If you leave it up to staff, we can talk with our attorneys and bring a draft, something for, for the council to look at.
Okay. We have several counselors who wish to speak. I'm going to go to first-time speakers first. So we have Counselors Melendez and Obray, and then we have Counselors Parker and Bordelon that are second time. So Counselor Melendez?
I prefer a process of staff bringing their recommendations and then we, we looking through it. Just a quick question to the attorney on an affidavit. It doesn't seem like i-if we required an affidavit to be signed saying that they have no criminal history, if something were expunged, probably they, if they had a criminal, a felony that was expunged, they could probably sign that they had no criminal past, is that correct?
Sure. So I think that's a parallel to the employment law context when you look, and there, there's actually a specific law that, that states if you've had these things expunged, if these things have happened, it's appropriate for you to sign off on a certain way. I just can't say that there's necessarily this parallel with what we're talking about, so we just have to look at that, but, but yes.
Yeah. And, and again, I, I agree with the town manager. I, I think we should just have, what the town staff recommend, they bring it to us, and we sort of look through it, so...
Thank you. Counselor Obray, you have the floor?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, in the course of doing rentals, which is a whole lot more simple than that, but I can go online and in a day have... a whole lot more simple than that, but I can go online and in a day have all the information you could possibly want on a particular person. I just have to, they sign a form, I send it into a company, they tell me their credit, they tell me their past history, they tell me their, if they have any police records, et cetera, the whole thing. So I would expect that that might be the easiest way to begin because that can be done at a side. It doesn't have to be something that we're putting regulations on. And I think anything past that, then we should turn to our council and say, would you review what's here? Or we might have had you do it and then you review it and you say, you know, I think this is, I think this is fine. I think the other thing that can be done very easily is as we've done these interviews, they've usually brought somebody in that talks about financing. Now, that part of it I have not been part of, so I don't know how far they go with that. But it would be normal to have a letter saying that they are in fact bona fide and they are going to have this amount of money to work with and, you know, you can, you can do this without upsetting anybody, I'm quite sure. I'm sure it's things that they're pretty much used to when they go into a town where people don't know them. I don't think this is ours to satisfy. I think it's, I think our manager and our council and our staff can do the initial inquiry that needs to be done in order for our proposal to come forward. If I might say, I think, I think you have to look at this the same way that I look at when I'm going to sell a house. When I'm going to sell a house, I'm going to go to that house and then I'm going to go to the town records and I'm going to be sure that the zoning is correct. And I'm sure, going to make sure that if there were any permits pulled, they've been signed off on. There's a whole group of things that you do, which they're doing with the land. And that's, that's step one. And then you put out for people that might be interested in it. And when you go out, you're telling them what is appropriate in that area. And then you get your proposals. And then when you select one, you can bring it to the council and do a presentation. It doesn't have to be redone. That's what's really been happening in the process. And it might be out of order to say this, but we got our fingers burnt, now everybody's overreacting. We have a good process. If we stay with the process, maybe add a couple of things as far as a little bit more in background, we should be in a very good position. Because you have to think about this, when somebody comes in and they're going to be putting millions of dollars into a project, the people that are sitting there with them saying that, yeah, we're going to finance it and we're his attorney and et cetera, that's a lot of money.
Your time is up.
Pardon me?
Your time is up.
I had so much more to teach you.
We are, we are listening. Okay, Councilor Parker for your second time.
Okay. I can agree with bringing it back to our attorneys. But my question would be, could you check with the other municipalities about the, how they do their background check on the RFPs? And maybe that gives our attorneys some ideas? Maybe we can go from there so that you guys discuss amongst yourselves and then maybe go from that point. And two, just a, I don't know, but I was going to ask it anyways. If the developer has been sued, I know there's certain things that are, they're sued for, do you guys take that into consideration? And do you look at how many times they have been? I don't know about that part of the process, so if you can explain that a little bit more.
Who do you want to answer? Mr. Burt, I think wanted to answer your first part.
Mr. Burt and then staff if they can.
Thank you.
Jeez, I just lost, what was your first part? Oh, yeah, I put out something to all the first selectmen, town managers, et cetera. I didn't get a ton of response and I also, you know, did internet searches, et cetera. Almost nobody does background checks. Now, it's recommended, you know, from a lot of other sources I saw in the RFP process. However, some of the response like, you know, we should probably start doing that. So again, we're sort of ahead of the curve on some of it. Now, just to mention my own experience with lawsuits, there's so many lawsuits, as Mr. Reiner mentioned, that, you know, can be associated with different contractors. Like I'm especially interested in myself is if you saw they did work for Waterford and there was a, you know, what appeared, you know, you look at the topic, what appeared to be a major lawsuit, well, one of the things I do is, you know, talk to Waterford because there, you know, as a reference then and see what happened there. And then you know some things to ask the developer and try to get to, you know, the bottom of it. But John and Paige may have something else to add.
And then Mr. Reiner, you want to?
Either one.
Mr. Reiner, if you could answer Councilor Parker's other questions, please.
So in regards to weighing how many times they've been sued?
Basically, but are there different types of lawsuits you would be looking at as you're picking a developer? Is there some that are cause for concern or are they just normal business practices?
I think we'd have to look at that on a case by case basis. I mean, if someone has a very, one, if someone sued, some of that might come up in some type of internet search or court search, but that might not necessarily show up on a background check. So I think it all really depends. I think that's something we'd have to look into a little bit. If somebody had a lot of pending lawsuits, we'd want to look at why and those could be some follow-up questions. You know, again, I think if a developer came in and was sued in every single town that they ever did work for, yeah, I'd say maybe that's a red flag and we want to, you know, look at what our other options are, too. You know, I think it all depends. I don't know if you want to weigh in anymore, Paige, on that.
Councilor Parker wanted to follow up.
Simply, it does depend. I would say there's a high percentage of developers that have been involved in some lawsuit at some point in time. So I think it really depends on whether there's a consistent trend or is it in a normal course of business where there are lawsuits with tenants, property owners, municipalities?
So do you guys check for those now?
Did you, did you hear the question?
Do you check now? Do you?
You repeat, I'm sorry.
Do you check if they have lawsuits when you're doing this process now? Is that part of the RFP process? Or is that after we've chosen the person to say, hey, well, it was probably after you've chosen the person, do we look for that, too? Is that a step that you guys look at? When you're picking the person, do we look at if they had lawsuits or anything afterwards? Do we look at the business as a whole or just certain things of the business?
Are you asking historically what have we done?
Yes.
Yes, historically, we try to get as much information as possible. We do look at their background. Actually, I was going to mention earlier, if you look in your packet, there are attachments. We have affidavits now, non collusion affidavits, anti kickback affidavits, acknowledgement. We want to know who their offices are. We look at their references. Councilor Obray talked about finances, we delved into that. We try to get as much information as we can as a part of this process in evaluating each of the proposals and their team. So it's always in our best interest, but same time, I have to admit, we weren't necessarily going back and looking decades ago at each individual and exactly what happened in all scenarios, particularly if we couldn't find that information easily. So, but to answer your question, yeah, we look for a whole picture, we look for their experience and history because we have to believe that the way they handled things in the past has some bearing on how they're going to deal with the town across.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to Councilor Bordelone for your second time. You have the floor?
Thank you. So I think it's important to realize that we're in the position we're in, we're talking about this because this wasn't the practice or the idea that we use or the model for documentation prior to this. As a counselor and as many counselors, after it then was brought, as people were for it in its entirety, when it came before the council, because of our RFP process and development process where we're not really brought to the table at an earlier phase, only two counselors were involved in that, one assumes that all this was being done. And so when folks address you and say, well, how could you agree with this developer because they have this, this, and this, we're agreeing to something that we think the homework is being done and this is what's presented to us. So I think the important part of this is that it's not just what we asked to put in there and what things we accept, it's the process in which if town counselors are spearheading a development in our town, we need to know what we are defending, what the background looks like, and there are going to be things that one is going to accept. And it's one thing if everyone up here could say, absolutely, we knew that background and I was 100% for them. But I couldn't say that. And that was one of the reasons I took my name off, because I assumed that the background was being done. So when looking at this, I think at this point, any starting point is better than what we have. And I think that's, that's the momentum we should build. But once again, we're talking about Pleasant Valley tonight and, and we're trying to build our whole basis on that. And as John stated earlier, we have not finished the process. So I know someone brought up Google searching. It's not Google searching from the stance of the reporter. It's if you see something like someone reports someone got a DWI and there's a report and they're in the paper, they've probably got a DWI, the reporter's going to report factual on that. Now, their opinions are another part of it. But at least the articles get you to a point to find documentation on things that may have happened. So I think what, what I feel I learned is we need a more robust process in which we're doing such. I think if it's pretty transparent at the beginning to all the developers that are moving forward that we're going to do that, and we do, that way when we pick our preferred developer, we will see the background checks in front of us and it's a more transparent process. That's, that was the intention or thoughts I had hoped for, is that a simple background check initially would be done, that's the first phase of getting them in, now you have your top three, the council reviews it and sees. And then at that point, we all have a stake in saying, wow, we don't really like this end or this end or that end. So I think the diving board should be set, let's set the bar first and let's grow from there. As we stated, we have nothing and we can have something now. And I think also we need to make sure that all the counselors are aware of what we're agreeing to when we're agreeing to a preferred developer. We need to know the facts and what we're agreeing to, and that is the background and the work. And that's something that I think should happen at the beginning phases. Thank you.
Okay, Councilors of Perry, I want to make sure I'm not missing you. Everyone else has spoken. Did you wish to chime in, sir?
No, I, well, I've been trying to remain silent because I, I think that the background check in our recent problem is not the part that destroyed it. I think that the people that lived in the area really didn't want to have.
Councilor Zepari?
Point of order.
Councilor Zepari, there's a point of order, Councilor Zepari. Excuse me, Councilor Zepari. What is your point of order?
I ask that the Councilors of Perry not speak regarding the neighbors in that area. I find it highly disrespectful and I think that we're talking about the.
Counselor Bordelone, I, you're, excuse me. I'm going to call, I'm going to say, Councilors of Perry, would you please refrain from discussing other items and stick to the item that is on the agenda, which is the RFP for Pleasant Valley School, please? Thank you, sir.
Well, I think we're doing the RSP, we're trying to develop ways of approaching future people with the RSPs. And that's what the discussion has been all along. And I think it's gone amok. I think it's, I think we do need to do background checks. I don't think background checks are very complex. I think they can be done fairly easily. I don't think that it needs a whole lot more and to imply that that's the reason for our difficulties now is quite, quite far afield of where we are. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
But I have tried to keep silent because I knew I would upset a lot of people by saying what I view as the truth.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to ask Mr. Burt, Mr. Reiner, Mr. Brunk, if you have enough from us as far as specificity?
Yeah, I was going to speak to that. And I think as a matter of fact, for the rest of it, we're set.
Okay.
Speaking of the selection committee, we have the draft process, already have that as a starting draft.
Could you just repeat that for us, please?
Okay. The third bullet is the selection committee. We have the draft reuse process where we already have just a draft committee.
Yep.
We'll plug that into here for now and we'll bring the process back to you and whatever changes, because we're soliciting your input, your changes for that, and whatever you set that committee at for the process, then that's what we'll use for Pleasant Valley. And anything else you want to change at that point, but we'll bring the process to you before you make any final decisions on the RFP.
All right, very good. Well, thank you. All right, thank you, gentlemen. At this point, I think we'll take a, we'll take a five minute break.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry?
Can I ask one question before they disappear?
I don't think they're going to disappear, but yes, go ahead.
Have we had inquiries into Pleasant Valley in the last six months?
From folks that did not bid on the project you're asking?
Right. I mean, it was out there and then it went away. No, I mean, it's a small town. People know it's probably basically back on the, on the bidding side. Have we had anybody that's inquired about it?
Yes.
Okay, so we're still okay with people wanting to come in and?
Okay, so.
Excuse me.
We need to stick with the topic at hand?
Jesus, it's my last night. Just leave me alone.
It's not your last night.
It's my last night.
It is 8:40. We will be back at 8:45. There's no motion made in advance. This is the referral that I initiated that we had quite a bit of support for, and tonight we're going to talk about the potential prohibition of the consumption of cannabis on public lands. So, Mr. Burt, I'm not sure who wants to start this. If, the attorney, Will?
Sure.
Attorney Duggan, thank you.
Sure, I'm happy to start. With regard to the prohibition on cannabis, this is part of the recent law, and I'm just going to read a portion of the law that pertains specifically to this item, and it concerns municipal powers, and it comes under the General Municipal Powers Act, which is 7-148. It provides that municipalities may regulate on any property owned by or under the control of the municipality. Any activity deemed to be deleterious to public health, including the burning of a lighted cigarette, cigar, pipe, or similar device, whether containing wholly or in part tobacco or cannabis, is defined in Section 1 of this act, and the use or consumption of cannabis, including but not limited to electronic cannabis delivery systems, as defined in Section 198342A, or vapor products, as defined in said section, containing cannabis. I'm going to stop just for the moment at that part of it, but I think that frames in part the discussion that the council may wish to have. That's specific to adding to the public health section and your powers to regulate issues pertaining to public health, the inclusion of prohibiting smoking cannabis, and, as it also says, or the use or consumption of cannabis, which I think goes beyond just smoking and can include other means of ingesting or smoking cannabis products. So that's a start, and I think it's perhaps important to note as well that in other sections of the act, it was made clear per, under state statute, that smoking cannabis, et cetera, is prohibited in municipal buildings, as well as, sort of says, the area around, which is defined as a 25-foot area outside of the buildings. It's also prohibited in school property and on school grounds. So those are things that are already taken care of, you know, as you start to think about this and think about what else this might include. Now, when the statute talks about property that's under the control of a municipality, the statute itself doesn't specifically define what that means or what areas that might include, but the Office of Policy and Management has provided some guidance indicating that the bill broadens this area to include property that a municipality controls but does not own. For example, for the purposes of this section, property that a municipality controls includes but is not limited to sidewalks, parks, beaches, municipal land and buildings, et cetera. Again, I think at least part with the smoking is already covered in municipal buildings already by the other statutes. So I think as you kind of start to look at some of this, it's just, I think important to know that there are some things that already are taken care of, and so it's your consideration of if you would want to ban the use of these products in other areas, and also knowing that if you don't ban them, then they can be used. So, no, it's your decision. And this would have to be, I'm sorry, and this would have to be via ordinance if you intended to impose a violation or penalty for it. And just as reference point two, just checking to see if we had other ordinances related to this, there's actually an old ordinance on tobacco already regarding vending machines, et cetera. So it's not necessarily that this would go there, but at least there's some reference point for that as well. The last thing that I didn't speak about in the last part of this subsection of the statute is that you may actually, municipalities may actually prohibit use in outdoor settings of restaurants. State statutes prohibit indoor use, but it can be extended to outdoor use or the outdoor areas of restaurants per municipal legislation.
Could you please clarify? Page 85 talks about state parks and beaches. That is already in effect, correct, the prohibition?
Yeah, so state parks and beaches, that's, yeah, separate, state-controlled, yep.
Okay, very good. All right, so I'm not sure if Mr. Burt or the chief wanted to add anything, or if we should just open this up and begin discussion?
I don't have anything.
All right. Do we have discussion on this item? No discussion.
If I may just offer one other item, too, that just came up while I was looking at things, is that, you know, recognizing that the town may have an ordinance that regulates this. If the city and Groton Long Point do not have regulations, then the towns would cover it, but if they do have regulations, they would control their own areas. And the city, in fact, has a specific tobacco-free ordinance already.
Okay. Counselor Bordelon?
I just wanted to quickly ask, what is our, you know, nicotine, you know, smoking, tobacco policy in Groton as it stands?
So right now, there's not a specific ordinance in place. There are employment policies that address things, as well as there's a, again, this gets a little goofy because there's a no-smoking policy in the library, but that would already have been covered by state statute. Our Parks and Recs group prohibits the use of smoking, tobacco, et cetera, at the dog park, as well as at other areas where it has programs. So those are the outdoor venues that those cover.
And as you stated, the city and Groton Long Point, they would fall under their own, obviously, jurisdiction on this, so.
If it's contrary to what the town legislates.
So this ban would allow folks, but it would not include people who have it for medical use?
This doesn't have, right, this doesn't address medical use, medical issues, et cetera.
Because there, I mean, I know cancer patients that have had used consumptions just to be able to go to work as an alternative form, and their job doesn't preclude them from having it, for example. I'm working at, you know, when I volunteer there, people have other ways that they're using, they're not smoking it, so it's not impeding anybody else, but, you know, there are people, so the consumption of and how that's regulated is, I mean, obviously not driving under the influence of, that's a whole nother category, so making sure.
So this, so your regulation of it, if the town chose to do it, is, it's very specific to municipal properties and properties, quote, "controlled" by the municipality, so it wouldn't get into anything employment-related, et cetera.
And it wouldn't be medical, that's what I heard from people, were the people medically related? They would not fall under this umbrella?
Right. I don't see, frankly, how they could. I'm guessing that there would be even an ADA accommodation, et cetera. I have to admit, I've not gone back through and looked at the entire medical-
Right.
-section, but the whole issue about, you know, medical dispensaries, et cetera, is completely different.
So the way this is now, it would be if a person was smoking a joint on their own property, but then stepped onto the sidewalk, they could be fined?
If the town chose to extend it to that point, the town doesn't have to.
Right. And I'm throwing out the thought-
Right.
Like, what this regulation would look like.
Right. You'd look at things like, well, is it sidewalks? Is it beach? Is it the town park? Well, you know, what are the other things it could be? So it's, there's potential, but I think you would have the ability to identify where it-
I guess my question for the chief would be, like, from enforcement level? I mean, you know, how is that going to work if we did have the more intense, like, for you guys, like, running around trying to put the manpower to, you know, facilitate that, you know, Johnny walked down the street because he went to a neighborhood party smoking his joint from one house to the next, and the neighbor calls in and says he's out there smoking on the sidewalk. Now the cops are called. Like, how is this going to be enforced from the town side?
We would enforce it the same way we enforce, make it akin to motor vehicle violations.
Oh, he's on mic.
Could you use a mic, please, sir? Thank you.
We would enforce it similar to the way we enforce motor vehicle statutes. This would fall under 51164, which is a municipal ordinance. If it were to be passed, if there were a municipal ordinance covering this, our officers could write an infraction, as long as the fine is between $90 and $250, so it's an infraction. And it would be handled much the same way we handle motor vehicle offenses and other similar infractions, violations, they're called, not really misdemeanors or felonies as you were talking about earlier, so we would enforce it the same way.
All right. And then my other question, how would this play into development or real estate, you know, dispensary places that would be legal under the umbrella, right, when it, you know, legalization? Would this-
Right. So this is completely, completely separate. This is just about, you know, regulation of the use on public properties. The other part of the act and statutes deal with, you know, retailers and, you know, micro cultivators, et cetera, all that stuff.
Right, so this is just being public, private. Okay. I think that, I mean, I think if we're going to regulate it to that capacity, I think we should be regulating cigarette smoke first at the same level. I mean, that way, I think it could get really confusing for police officers to walk by, what were they smoking?
I think police officers are trained to detect the difference. They know the difference between the two.
I'm not downplaying the fact, but I'm saying if you show up 30 minutes later and a person, you know, I mean, it would be a lot to just pull somebody in and, you know, if they don't have anything on them, to say, "Someone saw you smoking."
Again, it's not, it's not an arrest, it's an infraction.
Right.
They're not going to be pulling anybody in, that would, you know, that wouldn't be, that's not what they would do.
So this would be stronger than our smoking law in the town of Groton, correct, of cigarettes?
I think when you read the act, it's actually, it references smoking already. It talks about the ability of a town to, anything, any activity deemed deleterious to the public health, including the burning of a lighted cigarette, cigar, pipe, or similar device, or this. So if the town were to decide to enact an ordinance to this respect, you know, it could certainly incorporate everything.
So I guess one of my only examples, I look at like Par 4, right? The town owns that property, and people step out to have a cigarette while they're having a beer. And what if someone stepped out to have cannabis there? That would be a town property. After they're golfing or golfing on the golf course or drinking or smoking cigarettes, like, right now, it's allowed to smoke cigarettes. So that's the only establishment I can think of that's town-owned, that has like a bar atmosphere with smoking. I'm just trying to understand what that would look like for that facility.
I think you can tailor the ordinance as you saw fit. I think you can tailor the ordinance as you saw fit, but I mean, just right now, if somebody was smoking marijuana outside, it would potentially be a problem. You know, I mean, the law would prohibit it, so.
But I guess what I'm trying to say is that they're allowed to smoke cigarettes at Par 4, although there was no smoking on town property.
Your time is up, Counselor Bordelon.
So I'm just trying to understand how the lines are being drawn. Is that considered town property, was my question?
No, I'd say yes, it's town property. The golf course is town property. It's leased, I think we lease it to-
The building.
The building, the building itself. I think it's something you just, you know, you can explore as you address the ordinance as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Obrin?
So what we're basically talking about tonight, though, is discussing the potential prohibit of consumption of, whatever you want to call it, on public land. We're not talking about what somebody does in their home.
Correct.
We're just talking about what somebody does walking up and down the street and et cetera, not really even being specific to restaurants at this point, right?
No, you could, this, the statute as amended would allow the town to regulate the use of the products in outdoor restaurant settings. You don't have to do that. It just extends it that far. Other than that, it's very specific to, you know, town-owned or controlled property.
Thank you, that's all I have at this moment.
Counselor Franco?
So I wouldn't actually consider the cannabis similar to cigarettes. I would consider it more closely to liquor, as it's both, is mind-altering at some point, you know? And is there laws about drinking on town property? Is there laws about walking down the street and drinking a beer on the sidewalk?
Yes.
And can you elaborate?
There's an open, there's an ordinance covering the open container law here in Groton.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Open, open container, it is prohibited. There is an ordinance covering that. I don't remember the site, but I have, I am aware of it. There is a open container law here, or ordinance in the town of Groton.
And is there on, like, public property? We can't, you know, I mean, on municipal property? Like, you can't drink at Sutton Park, can you?
I think so.
There's a parks policy, I think that covers-
Mr. Burt, could you use a microphone?
I believe the parks have tailored something for that. We'd have to pull up, I think the parks have a policy that prohibits it in certain areas.
I would like it to be similar to that, where you're not just everywhere able to, you know, smoke cannabis. I would think Par 4 is a different situation. It's actually leased property, and it's not really, although it's our building asset, and we're responsible for some of it, it's actually leased by somebody, and they have the rights to do some things there. But I would just consider, like, drinking, and it's not something you do in public, walking down the sidewalk, and you don't do it, it's not permitted on municipal property, and I'm pretty good with that, I think. I'm pretty good with that, I think.
For example, I can tell you the parking reg- Hold on for one minute, because I think they're finding an answer for Counsel Franco.
There's one thing with regard to drinking and the dog park, that the rule is specific that there's no drinking or use of alcohol, use of tobacco products, et cetera.
Okay. In schools, it's already covered, you know, smoking and drinking.
Did you, did gentlemen wish to respond, or?
Do you want to grab that mic?
Yes, certainly, I'm sorry, I didn't think of providing that for you, I apologize.
That's why he's the chief.
Exactly. I think, might be on already?
Is it?
They usually walk around and turn them all on before the meetings start, so you may have turned it off.
Why don't you take this left and over there?
We're going to start singing karaoke next. Here's what it says, "Consumption of and possession of open containers in public places. The possession of open containers of alcoholic and intoxicating liquors and the consumption of alcoholic liquors on public streets, sidewalks, alleys, boulevards, parking lots, and other places in the town constitutes an immediate danger." And it prohibits, as defined under Connecticut General Statute 30-1, subsection 3, possession of a container which is open and contains alcoholic liquor in the town is prohibited on public streets, sidewalks, alleys, boulevards, parking lots, and other places, except at such times and such places, may specifically be exempted temporarily from the provision here and from hereof from time to time by the town council or its authorized agent." Goes on to say more, but.
There's also, can you hear me? Is that, I can't tell.
I don't.
The light's on, but it's not, I mean, there is a Parks and Rec policy, the consumption of alcohol is permitted in town parks, but is prohibited on playing fields and athletic facilities, and then the sale of alcohol, they go on to say the town manager for special events can waive the rule, that type of thing, but.
Counsel Franco, you have time remaining if you wanted to continue.
Thank you. I would sort of like to consider it like liquor, maybe a hybrid between liquor and smoking, but I will say, I went to New York just a couple of weeks ago, and I was walking through the streets of Manhattan, and you could smell cannabis everywhere, because they have no regulation whatsoever. And it is very out in the open, and they actually have delivery trucks that are delivering it all around town, big neon signs all over the trucks, and it's very popular in Manhattan right now.
Just, just in sort of preparing for this and looking back, I mean, the Department of Public Health has a whole set of programs and materials with regard to tobacco-free open facilities. I think they've actually, there's something on their website now which relates to cannabis as well, you know, and I think that there might be a distinction with drinking, and that drinking in the immediate might not impact necessarily the people around you, but like, what you're saying, that the smell, et cetera, can be not so great for others, I'm sure, in parks.
And when you have a family with-
Families, yeah.
When you have children around, it's not always pleasant, I don't think, and I would, I think I probably would like it to be similar to a hybrid between the smoking and alcohol considerations, and I would probably be in favor of banning them from public property. And it also states here on page 74, that at the bottom, it says, "Through regulation, municipalities may set up fines for violations by individuals regarding outdoor consumption of cannabis of up to $50." So I guess that would be the infraction.
Right, that, that would be the limit that we could put into an ordinance, yep.
Right, so our max is $50 infraction. But I would not want, I don't know if I'd like to overstep and maybe deal with bars and restaurants yet, I'm not sure.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to take my turn right now. I'm looking at this as a, a public health issue for the general public. What individuals choose to do in the privacy of their home is one thing, but when you're out in public, and you are consuming something that is detrimental to the people in your surrounding area who are potentially making a choice not to consume that same product, you're infringing on their rights, and I don't think you have a right to do that. So I would be in favor of, for the purpose of this section of property that a municipality controls includes without limitation to sidewalks, parks, beaches, municipal land and buildings, to include smoking or vaping tobacco or cannabis. I also am not interested at this point in going to the outdoor areas of restaurants or anything like that, I think it's more important to move in an expeditious manner to get the public consumption taken care of right away, to protect, you know, the people in our community who choose not to ingest the substance, and who may be inadvertently exposed to it just by being out in public on property that the town owns. And we are here representing the entire town, not just a certain segment of the town, so I would ask that we look to ensure that we are protecting all members of our society, and including our children, that I don't necessarily want to see my students, or your little brothers and sisters, exposed to it when someone else is walking down the street. So I would encourage the council to move forward with an ordinance banning the consumption on property that the municipality controls, as stated on page 74. Thank you. Counsel Baumgardner?
I encourage the theory.
Thank you, Counsel Baumgardner.
Yes, well, I certainly understand many remarks made tonight about protecting public health. I cannot in good conscience support additional regulations considering that our state just legalized the consumption and sale of marijuana. This was a policy, in my opinion, that should have happened years ago, and has disproportionately impacted minorities, the enforcement of marijuana prohibition for decades, and as a result, we have criminalized way too many members of our society, and unfortunately, you know, many members of our society were incarcerated as a result of the war on drugs, and it's my hope that as a municipality, we can now take our own steps to rectify some of those ills. The reality is, each and every one of us know people, young people, older people, that consume marijuana, and we have to face the reality that now that it is legal, as long as folks who do consume it are respectful of other people, not consuming it in someone else's face, you know, that we, that those, that we trust the individual to comply with existing state laws, and, and certainly not run afoul of them. So I, I don't support additional regulation. I would note, if we were a municipality over 50,000 people, and we were to enact a regulation such as banning consumption on public spaces, we'd actually be required to designate a location or locations within town where consumption of marijuana would be legal. The reality is, there are many people in our community who live in apartments, who live in condominiums, who live in multifamily homes, that it may not be appropriate to consume marijuana within their home, and literally the only way to do so is by being outside. So in, in that respect, you know, why should someone who is leaving their home, going onto a sidewalk very quietly, you know, pay a fine simply because a police officer is driving by and saw that individual smoking weed? To my eye, that's just not right, and we need to move forward. Additionally, I, it was my understanding that we would also tonight be discussing whether or not we would explore a 3% tax on the sale of marijuana. Obviously, we cannot do that if the Planning and Zoning Commission took a stance that they're going to ban the sale or cultivation in our community on a, or moratorium. I understand that's an interim moratorium, and they're going to explore additional regulations down the road, but can you kind of speak to that?
Well, again, I think they are two different things, so one is an issue of, you know, use and consumption on public property, the other is the issue as to whether or not, you know, the, the town will set up rules or zoning rules to allow for micro cultivators and retailers to be in town. And my understanding of that portion of the act is that if that happens, we don't have a choice with regard to the 3%, it's, we have to impose it, and it has to be collected. The things that I, in thinking about it, and I'm not sure how much of a burden that will be to the town, which doesn't already perhaps have a system set up like, you know, other private companies do in terms of, okay, we got the cash register, we got this, we know what's going on, what this is tacking on with the, you know, with the 3%, or the methods to collect it, and the methods to have to interface with the state DRS, et cetera. Perhaps we have that through the golf course, but I'm just not, just not certain, so it would be one thing to consider as well, but that's specific to the, you know, the other part of the act, and if those, if a micro cultivator and/or retailer were allowed, then we would have to, you know, apply the tax.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification, is there an existing state law that protects us and would make this law redundant, or this potential ordinance redundant?
No, so there are two, the, the state laws talk about the indoor, the inside municipal properties and buildings and school properties, and then they extend it a little bit to the area, you know, around this 24-foot, or 25-foot radius, but for purposes of the outdoor regulation, this would, this would need to be used.
Counsel Melendez, you have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes, I 100% am in support of regulating this in terms of smoking, but is there any way to draw a sort of distinction between smoking and eating? As, as I don't think consuming cannabis that way sort of has an effect on everybody else, is there a way to draw that distinction?
Sure, you, you can draw that distinction, distinction, because in the statute it talks about smoking or consumption, so you can make that distinction in the ordinance if you so chose.
Yeah, so, I mean, if we're talking about regulating, you know, anything that produces secondhand smoke, I, I'm all for it. I think we should definitely make exceptions for edibles or whatever else that doesn't really affect people outside of you, so, thank you.
Are there any first-time speakers before we go to, Counsel Parker?
I want to make sure that what we're discussing tonight is, we're talking about banning it for municipality, municipal buildings outside, not inside.
Correct, the inside is governed already.
Inside is governed already, so we're looking at banning the smoking or vaping of marijuana, cannabis, marijuana, outside, for instance, Groton Senior Center, we don't want it outside on the property, because it could affect everybody else. I can agree with that, and I agree with Counsel Melendez about the consumption, because it's not affecting the person if they're doing that. I do agree with having just municipal buildings and properties, because it could affect someone. I know a few people who are allergic to it, so it could have an adverse reaction if they're smoking it right near a person in a municipal building, public space, so that's my concern for that. I just want to make sure we're only talking about municipal buildings and property at this time, thank you.
Yeah, and just for clarification on that, you know, it says, "Properties owned or controlled by," which, again, then relates to beaches, parks, sidewalks, et cetera. It doesn't have to pertain to all those, but it can.
Do I still have time?
Yeah, you do.
Okay, so, the sidewalk, so if somebody, like Counsel Baumgardner said, somebody goes outside on their, to the edge of the property, by the sidewalk, will they get in trouble?
I guess, I guess it's.
Somebody's going to ask it, I'm just going to throw it out there.
I guess the defining, the, the, the answer would be, are they on property governed by that ordinance? Are they on the sidewalk, are they not? You know, we're kind of splitting hairs there, but to, to the point, if, you know, if there's an individual down there smoking it and intentionally blowing it in someone's face, there isn't an ordinance, you really can't do anything about it.
Okay.
If they're doing it intentionally and there is an ordinance, you probably could.
Okay.
Which covers the streets as well?
Street, yeah, the streets as well. It's not specifically stated in the OPM guidance, but it's, I can't imagine that it's not the streets as well.
You have it, you have over a minute, let's, Counsel.
Okay, unless we exclude the streets and the sidewalks, can that be done? So if someone, literally, if they have to walk outside their home, they have young kids, they can't smoke it within their home, and we're only talking about recreational use, though, correct? Not the medical marijuana, because, so if someone goes outside their home, steps onto the town property, because some of the properties do, you go out your home and you're stepping onto the town, but they can't smoke it in the home, that's where it's going to be catching hairs.
Yeah, I mean, you can, the, the council can choose to construct this ordinance as it sees fit, it doesn't have to, what I'm describing to you is trying to share with you the broadest scope. This is, this is what you could do, it's not what you have to do, you know, and you could parse certainly some of that out, whether it's, you know, ingestion, or, you know, saying, okay, it's not going to be the sidewalks, but it's really, it's really yours to make, you just have the boundaries that I'm describing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Counsel Obrin?
Going back to what the first page said here is, you know, the town council will be discussing the potential prohibition of the consumption of cannabis on public land. I don't think that there's any problem with that at all, I think that's exactly what we should be saying, and I would hope that that may be what we come back with. I had a question on, it says requiring them upon petition of 10% of the voters to hold a local referendum on whether to allow recreation sale of marijuana, or whether to allow certain types of cannabis businesses within the municipalities. Are we talking to that tonight as well?
No, I'm going to let Mr. Bird or the attorney.
Sure, yes, that's separate, dealing with the retail sale and cultivation.
I'm sorry, I'm-
That's okay, that's separate, that's a separate part of the act, dealing with the retail sale or cultivation, this is just about-
That'll be another step that we go forward to.
Certainly, you can, you can discuss.
Isn't that Planning and Zoning's handling that?
Oh, sorry, yes, Planning and Zoning right now.
Okay. Well, I for one have no problem with this. If somebody wants to smoke it in their home, that's fine, if they're going to go to a friend's house, they're going to do it, they're inside, that's fine, but past that, I don't think we need to allow it at all. You know it's going to happen, but we should not be encouraging it by saying, oh, sure, go anywhere you want and enjoy it. To me, that's just, it's just not the way to go. This is a good town, we want to keep it as a good town, and I think we have to be conservative in how we, we approach it. My next-door neighbor in Florida, every night he goes out on the deck and has some, and it drifts over, and I finally said to him, will you buy some good stuff, that stuff stinks. That's his, you know, that's his prerogative, and I don't have a problem with that at all. So he could be drinking a bottle of wine, but to be out and doing it, no. I just want to say that that's not anything that I'm in favor of, so I hope others can look at it the same way. And, and I also would say, it might be a good idea, as we go on with this, maybe after the planning and zoning, that they will make some recommendations that wouldn't be needed, but if they don't, it might be good to have a public hearing on it. Thank you.
Okay, we're going back to second-time speakers, unless Counselors DePerry wanted to speak. Okay, so we've got Bordelain, Franco, and then I'll speak again. Counsel Bordelain, you have the floor?
Thank you, I just want to say, I agree with Counsel Melendez, like, you know, edible or consumable is no different than, you know, I mean, I don't think, I think smoking, though, cannabis or cigarettes, I really think the ban should also include nicotine to make sure that no one's smoking outside of public town property as well, because if we say that marijuana is insulting the smell as well, I, I thought, you know, cigarette smoke is, people are allergic to that- smoke is, people are allergic to that as well. And I think if we're gonna take that to that level, I think all of our property, because consumable, if I drink a beer here, it's not gonna affect you. If I eat something here, it's not gonna affect you. But if I smoke a cigarette, marijuana, or whatever I smoke right here, it's gonna affect everybody that's around me. So anything that's, you know, seeping into someone else's lungs is, you know, a form of a contaminant. And so, I think if we do this, is there a way to make sure we include nicotine in that? Because I think the vape crisis that's going on right now is everywhere. And people are blowing it. And some people think that vaping is better than cigarette smoke. So, they think that they can vape close to you because, you know, it's not the same. It doesn't smell. But not everybody wants to inhale vapors from, from manufacturers. I don't know where they got them from and where the chemical was made. So I would like to see if we're gonna ban it at all on town property for smoking. It should be smoking as a whole. Because it's insulting in all forms, no matter if it's marijuana, nicotine, whatever you got in that pipe. A lot of people don't want to smell it. So that, that would be my recommendation. I think stepping outside the senior center to have a cigarette or stepping outside of the town hall to have a cigarette, you should have to leave the property to do such. Now you're gonna be on the sidewalk. I don't know. My next question is, what about town-owned property, like subsidized housing and things like that, like senior housing? Where do we in our town, because I can't think of the city side, I think of the town side, any, any properties there that would fall under this jurisdiction?
Well, we don't, that's independent of the town, the senior residents' properties. So, I don't, I don't think it'd be affected unless they have a public road or public sidewalks there.
Right. We can look at it, but I don't think it'd be...
So I guess the question is like the sidewalks, they're considered public. I, I mean, I can see not wanting, you know, wanting to, I hate going into Stop &amp; Shop and out front they drink coffee and smoke cigarettes right at the front. And I have to walk through the puff of cloud, you know. Once again, we're not gonna regulate that. But I think, yeah, I think smoking of any, and it's not targeted to cannabis, it's smoking any nicotine of anything, in anything where people have to be exposed to it in great length on public property. And I just want to be clear, because some people keep saying, whatever they do in their house, this ordinance would still allow people to smoke their cannabis on their front lawn if they want. Right. So, as much as we try to avoid it, I mean, there are, I have a friend recently that says the guy comes out every day, smokes in his hot tub, and the hot tub's right up on the property line, kind of like what you were dealing with. So, you can steer, your kids are still gonna be driving their bikes, why not someone could be laying on their front lawn, smoking a cigar of cannabis. I mean, so the exposure will be there. It will be allowed to be, if my, if my understanding is correct.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
If it's on your front lawn, on your property, this, this would not...
Correct.
Correct. Okay. I can support banning it in public spaces, but I would like to add nicotine in there as well, making sure all public buildings, you have to leave the property.
Okay. Councilor Franco for your second time?
I would be open to a public hearing and find out what our community thinks. And also, I don't think we should, probably edibles would be something that we shouldn't be policing because, hey, you're gonna check everybody's brownies, their gummies. I mean, I think it gets a little too much there. I think the, as I heard earlier, there's legal consumption and sale of cannabis, and it's become legal now. But there were, there's regulations when liquor's legal now. I mean, there's regulations on these things to, for the greater good of our community, I think, and the safety of our community. And there was something that did pop into my attention that we may want to also review the BYOB ordinance that we have so that there will not be after-hours businesses that might be like staying open all night long until 5:00 a.m. serving cannabis. And they may have to be the same kind of things as, with our BYOB, because it's not regulated like with liquor. In some establishments, we might want to add it into the BYOB ordinance. And, so, let me ask the chief. Like, this is your specialty, the laws and everything. So can you tell me, is it harder to, like, like when we're first instituting a rule or a regulation or a policy, is it easier to start off hard and then maybe ease back later? Or is it, should we start off soft and then add on regulations later? Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I'm just working now or not.
Yes.
I think as a general rule, I mean, it's easier to get, it's easier to back off on something than to increase onto something, right? If you say, this is the standard now, and you try to tighten it up later, it's harder to do that as opposed to, you know, making it more prohibitive now and loosening it up as you go along. This is all new territory, right? I mean, this is not something that we've explored before. I, I don't, you know, I'm highly confident our officers aren't gonna be patrolling the streets, looking and jumping on people that are smoking a marijuana cigarette. I think that if there is a conflict that arises because someone's on public property and they are smoking it, and a parent calls and says, hey, listen, I got my kids here. I really don't want them exposed to this. I, I think as a public policy matter, the, the town council should seriously consider that. If there's areas of the town that you want people to occupy, you know, I, I don't want my kids exposed to that. I'm, I'm sure other parents don't. And I don't know that it's necessarily a law enforcement issue. It's a public policy issue. What, what, what kind of community you want to live in. And that's not saying people can't smoke it. It's legal, as is pointed out. They can smoke it in plenty of places. But I think that you want to go with your lowest common denominator. If the people want, they don't want to be exposed to it, I think that would be a consideration too. And I, I think maybe one of those, you mentioned having a, a town meeting or town hearing on this, or, I, I would certainly be interested in hearing what Gas Pass to say about it. They're certainly one of the more vocal advocates in this community when it comes to substance abuse and how it affects our children. That's something that I would advocate, that you'd listen to hard as well. It's such a, such a group of advocates that, that put a lot of time and thought and research into this.
Thank you. I think there's lots to consider, but would there be a possibility for us to have a public hearing maybe in a matter of weeks on this notice? This isn't regulated by state statute, though. We had to have one. So, I mean, we're having a public hearing.
Yeah. It'd be similar to what we do with, what we're planning with the Ver Review, yes.
So can I make a motion to have a public hearing on, the potential prohibition of the consumption of cannabis on public lands?
Sue, one more time, please.
I'd like to make a motion.
Public hearing?
For a public hearing related, related to the discussion of the potential prohibition of the consumption of cannabis on public lands. It's basically the last sentence of the...
Okay. I'm gonna read it back to you, okay? So give me one second. So the motion by Franco is to schedule a public hearing related to the potential prohibition of the consumption of cannabis on public lands?
Yes. I know. Shall I set the date? Or will they set the date?
Well, we, how did we do this last time? I think we set the date afterwards when we looked at everything to see where everything was, right?
Yeah. You want to allow enough time to get the word out there. The hard part is you're running into, you know, holidays and turnover.
Right. Does, if you would like, it's your motion. So if you want to add a date, go ahead and add a date. So it's, it's still like your thing that no one's seconded yet. So if you want to pick a date, add a date to it.
I think that's, the second Tuesday of the month is the ninth. Is that correct? I'll set it for November 9th.
Now, if you're gonna record, I'm sorry. No, go ahead. I was gonna mention, like, last time, the reason we did the Ver Review tonight was so we have enough time to put it in the paper.
Yeah.
If you approve this to the second, and then you want it to the ninth, it's gonna be tight to get word out there really well.
And I, I might also suggest that the way that that was worded on the referral was, was fairly broad. But it also includes the term consumption, which I think respectfully wasn't where you were going with that, as I understood it. That it was more about the smoking or the use of e-products that contain cannabis. I, I don't know how specific you want to be. And I just don't know if what you say for a public hearing might be misleading to people or might cause people to be perhaps more uncertain or more, more upset with what it is. And, you know, even to say, and I understand why it's written that way, public lands, yeah, municipal property. You might, you might want to phrase it a different way to be sure that everybody understands really what the input that you're looking for.
Did you wish to rephrase, Councilor Franco?
Oh, no.
Let me make sure too that the town attorney's available on the ninth.
So, just to start with, do you want to change it from consumption to smoking or vaping?
Sure.
Point of, point of clarification, is it just, I just want to ask, and I'm not criticizing saying it has to be, is it smoking or vaping of any products? Or just, we're talking, I'm asking.
This is Councilor Franco's...
I'm asking.
...motion?
I'm just talking about cannabis right now because I think if we do anything else, we should do that in a separate motion and deal with one topic at a time, I think. And if that wants to be brought up in the future, I think we could deal with that as well.
Okay. So then, I'm gonna read you what I have, and then you can choose whether you want to adapt it to what the attorney has recommended. So I have written down, to recommend a public hearing related to the potential prohibition of the smoking and vaping of cannabis on public lands. Did you want to change anything about the public lands aspect or leave it as stands?
I want to just sort of leave it because...
Okay. So does it...
It's not just municipal. It is the sidewalks and the, you know, it's things of that nature that I have heard some people saying they don't want to see it on the sidewalks. So I want to leave it as public lands.
All right. So I'll read it one more time and then...
Excuse me? Sorry. Perhaps public municipal lands?
Say again.
Public municipal lands, just so it's distinguished from, we're not talking about any state properties, which would also be public property.
So I'll read it one more time, Councilor Franco. To recommend a public hearing related to the potential prohibition of the smoking and vaping of cannabis on public municipal lands?
Yes.
Is that, okay. So that's a motion by Franco to have a public hearing as per what I just read. I will second that.
And what were you saying about November 9th?
Oh, it's...
That's fine.
November 9th date would be fine?
Well, we, I think Mr. Burt said he has to check to make sure we can get the notices done. Do we have enough time if it's not approved until the second?
Oh, yeah.
If you're ready and set to go for the Wednesday, because we're not having a meeting on Tuesday. We're having it on Wednesday night. So if we approve it Wednesday night, you'll be good to run it.
Let me, I probably better check on that with the paper just to make sure what their deadlines are.
Okay.
I usually, I don't do the postings myself.
All right. So then, there's a motion on the floor to set a public hearing. Is this discussion related to the public hearing?
Yes.
Councilor Brown Gardner?
It's, it's, no, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, we have one motion on the floor. So I'm not sure what, are you trying to amend?
Yes.
Because this isn't, this isn't budget, so...
Yes.
All right. Go ahead.
Yes. I'd like to amend the motion to include tobacco smoking on municipally-owned property.
Okay. Hold on. Okay. So then it would read, public hearing related to the potential prohibition of the smoking or vaping of cannabis and tobacco products on public municipal lands?
Include, yes. Including, no. I'd like to amend the motion to include tobacco smoking.
I think that's, maybe I didn't read it correctly because I screwed up before. I'll read it. I'm trying to amend which, what was moved. And tell me if this is what you're trying to say.
No, exclusively tobacco smoking.
Not cannabis.
Not cannabis.
So you're stripping out, but that's, so, so if I'm recalling correctly, that is, I believe it's out of order because it is negating what the item on the floor is. I'm getting a nod from our parliamentarian.
I'm just thinking out loud, thinking, checking my head.
I, I think that negates, and that is not what the item on the floor is. So it would be ruled out of order because it doesn't pertain to 2021-704. 2021-704 is about cannabis.
I'm just looking at it really simply and just saying it's a completely different motion.
Madam Mayor, may I speak to that? So, the cannabis municipal authority, which is the agenda item, is the, correct me if I'm wrong, was granted by the state legislature. That is what we are. We are the cannabis, we're dealing with the cannabis municipal authority this evening. And so, the law's governing, including tobacco smoking, was included in the legal, the, the public act 21-1. So, it is to remain because it says, existing law allows municipal, municipalities to regulate activities deemed harmful, harmful to public health, including tobacco smoking, on municipally-owned property. The bill broadens this to include property that municipal, the municipality controls but does not own. And then it goes on to say, but not limited to, including but not limited to sidewalks, parks, beaches, municipal land and buildings. So...
May I, may I ask, I apologize. May I ask, just, are you saying, I think the question was, is your motion solely that the public hearing will be on, I'm just generalizing, or banning tobacco on public grounds? Or are you saying, oh, no, I'm just amending to ban cannabis and tobacco?
No, I'm making an amended motion to ban tobacco smoking on municipal property.
In addition...
Which is branded through the municipal...
But that, in addition to...
Yes.
In addition to. Okay. I think the confusion was...
No, no, not in addition to. Not in addition to.
Not in addition to. You're saying, forget the cannabis.
He's trying to strike cannabis and only insert tobacco, which I'm saying is out of order because it doesn't pertain to 2021-704, which is the item on the floor.
It's just hard to see how you can, again, I'm, I'm talking just generally and practically to say, your motion, it seems like just a separate motion. Because your motion is, Mayor was saying, just negates entirely the motion.
Dilatory. That's the word I wanted. Dilatory motion. I've got to find it.
So we're, my, my, my point is, we're deciding to single out cannabis smoking when the municipal, the discussion item includes tobacco smoking. So we are choosing to ignore tobacco smoking by virtue of the motion that Councilor Franco put on the floor.
So, I'm looking at Roberts Rules, section 39, dilatory and improper motions. A dilatory motion, a motion is dilatory if it seeks to obstruct or thwart the will of the assembly as clearly indicated by the existing parliamentary situation. Improper motion, I'm trying to find the exact passage here. But it, it does negate, we, we had to use this before, actually. It takes away what the original motion was. And I keep going back to it. What we're debating is 2021-704. What you are going for is something totally unrelated to the matter at hand. Therefore, it would be ruled out of order because it wasn't pertaining to this particular item. If you were taking Councilor Franco's motion, which included cannabis, which is the topic of this item, and added to it tobacco, that would be acceptable because this is pertinent to 2021-704. If you're trying to remove the gist of the item that is on our agenda, that's not an appropriate motion. So I would rule you out of order. And I think, I think the attorney is in agreement.
Yeah. I mean, I'm being honest with you. I'm not looking at Roberts Rules. Again, I'm just trying to think it through practically.
Right.
And see that it appears that because of what you're, you're seeking to amend and completely remove.
Yes.
You know, what was there and then add something completely different. I think, and this is where I was going before, where she was going to say that if, if you are amending the motion to say, oh, I also wanted to include, you know, prohibiting tobacco, I could, that I could follow as well.
I'm glad you're here because I'm ruling the motion out of order. So thank you. If you'd like to amend, we can entertain amendment, but just striking that completely is out of order on this particular item.
I'd like to put a motion on the floor, amendment.
And that would be?
I would like to just add tobacco and vape product like as a whole. I think from a regulatory standpoint, I...
Hold please. Hold please. I got to write because I'm gonna forget otherwise. So you want to include, so...
Vaping in general, anything, any type of thing that is affecting everybody else's health, well-being at a, a public building.
So, to recommend a public hearing related to the potential prohibition of the smoking or vaping of cannabis or tobacco on public, in public municipal lands?
Correct. Yes. Because I think it's...
So, is there a second?
Second.
Hold please. Include tobacco. Okay. I'm gonna read it one more time to be sure I'm... Okay, I'm going to read it one more time to be sure I'm clear. So the amendment by Bordelant, seconded by Baumgartner, is to recommend a public hearing related to the potential prohibition of the smoking or vaping of cannabis or tobacco on public municipal lands. Is that correct, Counselor Bordelant?
That's correct.
Okay. And there's a second by Baumgartner. You may speak to your amendment.
Actually, I think it should be vaping in general because some people don't, there's some vape products that don't have nicotine in it.
Counselor Bordelant, I just read it to you.
And I apologize, and I apologize, give me a minute. I just thought when you reread it back, it sunk, and I sometimes retain a little bit at different speed. I also think it's vaping of any products should be on there because right now there's a huge problem in our school systems with vaping, and it's not necessarily nicotine in the vape products.
So are you withdrawing your amendment?
All I want to add is any vaping products, that's all.
May I just, yes, please. So I think with that, where you're going, it has to be within the statute, you know, for us to cover it. And so perhaps the amendment can read as the statute reads.
Sure.
And I'm saying this generally, "To regulate on any property owned or under control of municipality any activity deemed dilatory as to public health, including the lighting, assuming, including the burning of a lighted cigarette, cigar, pipe, or similar device, whether containing wholly and part tobacco, cannabis, as defined in this other portion of the act, including electronic cannabis delivery systems as defined in this section, or vapor products as defined in another section containing cannabis." That's, that's clear to me that those are covered. I just don't want, I don't want you to necessarily suggest that there's something else out there that maybe we can't actually regulate.
I think, I think-
So Counselor Bordelant, she, Counselor, the attorney is suggesting language that is appropriate. Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I agree with that, absolutely.
So would you withdraw your motion?
Yes, that's fine.
And would you withdraw your second?
Yes.
Okay, and so would you please state if that's what you would like to have as your amendment?
I would like to state as written as the attorney stated on the record.
With simply, I'm just going to X out from here, consumption of cannabis.
Correct.
Because again, I think folks said that that's not what we're, not what you're interested in.
Would you, would you please for the record, so that our person doing transcription can find that easily, give where that, because I'm not seeing that exact verbiage in the packet here.
Right, correct, it's on, and I'd be happy to send it.
To, to Ms. Hilton?
I'll send it, it's, for reference, it's subsection 16 of section 8 of section, I think, H of 71, 148, anyway.
It's on page, it's 130- It's important for the record, guys.
Yeah, it's page 132 of the Public Act.
132 of the Public Act.
Of the Public Act, and I will forward that to John.
Yeah, but we need to know it now.
That, that is moved by Bordelant, is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Bordelant, seconded by Baumgartner, and what, what has been moved and seconded is what Attorney Duggan read from the Connecticut General Statutes, correct?
Correct.
The section that was read into the record tonight, which will be forwarded in writing to the manager to be incorporated into our minutes.
So we usually, can you repeat it again?
Sure.
Because we usually have it in writing to be able to vote on it.
So it's a public hearing on regulating on any property owned or under the control of the town, the burning of a lighted cigarette, cigar, pipe, or similar device, whether containing wholly and part tobacco or cannabis, including but not limited to electronic cannabis delivery systems or vapor products as otherwise defined in the act.
It looks very similar to what's on page 74 under section 84, effective October 1st, 2021, but a lot more detailed what you read. Existing law in place through September 30th?
Correct, you were looking at the OPM guide, yes.
Yes.
It's just the actual verbiage on that.
So that was page 74 of our packet where it says, "Section 84, effective October 1st, 2021." There's kind of a brief summary of what the attorney was reading to us in the language from, is that OPM or OLR? OLR? Okay, so that's what's on the floor, that's the amendment.
Madam Mayor, may I just speak to the motion, the amendment?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that I think when you're regulating this, if you're just driving by and not spelling it, someone vaping and smoking in public area, you can get a ton of calls of people saying, oh, it looks like someone's smoking. You can't tell that the vape devices all look very similar. And I think if we're finding cannabis to be insulting, cigarette smoke is just as dangerous to the lungs secondhand, as we've learned. And I think if we're going to ban that, we should treat them equally, and they should be banned from the same areas and regulated in that fashion. Thank you.
Counselor Franco?
So I think if we're going to do tobacco, I think we should do that as a separate item and on a different day. I don't, and let me ask you, if we put these two together in a public hearing, will they have to go together on whether they're banned or not? So if the public comes out and says, I want to ban cannabis here, and we take that, when we come back, can we split them apart again?
Yeah, I don't, I think the purpose of the public hearing is simply for you to gain information to help you make a decision. And could you, do you have to follow exactly what's provided there? No, so can you separate those out if you so chose later?
Sure.
And you'll have official public hearings for, when you actually have an ordinance, right?
So I would just like to ask my fellow counselors to please vote the amendment down. And if we want to take up tobacco on public lands, that we should do that as a separate item, and they should be voted on separately. And that's my opinion, and I'm sure people in our community would, may think the same way. Maybe they don't. But in a sense, I can also hear that people will be saying there is a lot of overreach on some of this. So I would just like to break them apart and take them separately. Thank you.
I'm going to speak as well. Hold on, Counselor Franco, but I totally agree with you. I think that inserting tobacco in this muddies the water. And I think right now it is imperative that this town take care of protecting our people by moving to ban the public consumption, vaping, smoking of cannabis on municipally-owned public lands. If you want to take up tobacco later, that's great, that's fine, trust me, I do not like cigarette smoke either. My husband used to smoke outside even when it was 20 degrees and snowing because I wouldn't let him smoke in the house around the kids. So take it up if you want, but don't muddy the waters with this. This is important work that we get done, and I will be voting against the amendment, despite all the work I made you do on that. I will be voting against the amendment, and I think we should take it back to just hearing from the public on whether they want cannabis smoking and vaping banned on public municipal lands. I think we need to keep it simple and not muddy the waters with this because you're going to run into a lot of opposition that I don't think we need. I think our friends at GASP, Carolyn Wilson, would be happy to come out and speak about this. I'm sure she'll be participating in the public hearing, and I would encourage lots of other people to participate as well. So I'm opposed to the amendment and want to go back to the original motion regarding narrowing the focus to cannabis consumption on municipal lands, cannabis smoking or vaping. Okay. Counselor Baumgartner?
Well, certainly tobacco smoking is dilatory as to, or harmful to public health. Certainly from an environmental perspective, we want to talk about public lands. How about cigarette butts? They don't biodegrade, they last, they lay in our ground for, for years. They don't decompose. I can't tell you how many times we've done cleanups going around on sidewalks, on, you know, certainly our open spaces, seeing them, and, you know, that, that certainly has an impact on, on public health as well because those chemicals seep into our waterways. Not, and certainly, you know, folks are swimming or, you know, enjoying beautiful, you know, beaches, and, you know, and cigarette butts wash the shore. That has an impact, especially if there's a child who is playing in the sand, decides to put one in their mouth. I mean, these are things we have to consider too. So I, I object to the assertion that it's only cannabis smoking that, you know, is harmful to, to public health, when in reality, it is a proven fact that the only thing that is prescribed by doctors to help people is marijuana. Smoking is not. Smoking cigarettes are not, smoking tobacco are not. So I think we should treat both as such. It is allowed through, you know, the legislative, enabled by the state legislation. And not doing so, what I think would be, quite frankly, very disrespectful to many people who do partake in it in our community. I would note in Stonington, they voted overwhelmingly to vote, to allow cannabis establishments in their community, and I think there are far more people in Groton who would vote that way too.
That's-
Not related, but I'm just saying, I think there is a bit of singling out on cannabis consumers this evening.
I would like to stick to the topic at hand, which is cannabis.
Cannabis.
Cannabis, I'm getting tired and I have a headache, so forgive me. That's on the floor. We've got to stick with what is on our agenda packet. We're deviating from what's on our agenda. If we can stick to that.
Point, point is taken. You have time remaining, Counselor Baumgartner?
I think I said enough tonight, thank you.
Counselor Bordelant?
Thank you. I mean, it is on the packet in theory, right? It's black wrapped in here, and I think to set a precedent that we're going to go after marijuana right out of the gate, and, and we realize the impact of folks dying from lung cancer from cigarette smoke, and we've done nothing, nothing in the town to ever enact and allow. I find it offensive when people smoke in front of my kids. Smoking anything, there's a form of addiction that goes with it. So to say, yes, it might not alter the mind, but there is a dependency on it that, that just like the other items do. Folks drink alcohol in front of children, some people don't want folks drinking alcohol in front of kids. So I think that it's not wrong or unjust to incorporate cigarette smoke with the cannabis. I think it's a time to act now in the sense because I think it's going to be much easier to handle and, and, you know, I think we should have banned smoking in front of our public buildings long ago, and we have not yet. So why are we delaying in doing such? And we're talking about all the harmful effects of smoking, any child of anyone. I mean, recently cigarettes moved up to age 21 for a reason. It's harmful. Cannabis and alcohol can't be used until 21. So kids are getting these vape cigarettes, and they're leaving their households, and they're out on the roads and walkways using these devices. And I think this is a chance for us to ban it, and banning smoking and lighting cannabis and nicotine. And I think they're one in the same. It doesn't mean that the final product going forward will be cannabis or nicotine alone, but I think that public discussion would allow for it to both be on the table, and that we're talking about our public health and in areas of concern. So I do think that they're one in the same, and I think it is time to act on that. And I encourage us to do so as a council. And it doesn't mean that that's the sole thing that will move forward. It's, it's open, a public hearing is merely discussion. Thank you.
Counselor Parker, are you leaving us? It is 9:58, we are going to be at seven counselors. Okay, so we're at seven counselors at this point. So we will vote on the amended motion, which is Attorney Duggan's reading, which includes tobacco and cannabis. I would like, raise your hand if you're in favor of the amended public hearing motion. Baumgartner? Bordelant? Melendez? Opposed? Franco? Overy? Granatowsky? Zepari? Abstentions, that's everybody, so that's seven. So that motion fails, so we are back to the main motion on the floor. So we will vote on the, sorry, the hearing. All those in favor of the original motion to set the public hearing, please raise your hand. Franco? Overy? Melendez? Zepari? Granatowsky? Those opposed? Baumgartner? Abstentions?
All abstained.
That motion passes. Five in favor? One opposed, one abstention. Okay, very good. Thank you. It is 9:59. Move fast. I move to recommend to amend section five of the retirement plan for non-union employees at the Town of Groton to conform with practice by substituting five years for 10 years. Moved by Granatowsky, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Franco. This is 2021-735.
I'm sorry, I apologize. There was a-
The amended motion.
There was amended motion.
All right, I withdraw my motion, Counselor Franco. Withdraw. And we are at 10 o'clock.
Do they have this one?
Maybe.
I need consensus to move ahead since we are at 10 o'clock. Are we, is there any objection to moving ahead with the last item? Counselor Overy objects. Will we have a forum with everyone else, one, two, three, or if we will still have a forum? Okay, so we will move ahead and, let me find it. So it's on the front page. Motion to authorize the manager to incorporate, is that the one?
Yes.
Okay, this is the first, I'm seeing this tonight. So motion, this is item for Ms. Hilton, 2021-735, Retirement Updates. Motion to authorize the town manager to incorporate language into the retirement plan for non-union employees to clarify the eligibility for a deferred pension benefit for employees who separate with five or more years of service and reach age 65 as otherwise indicated in section four of the retirement plan. I so move-
Second.
Move by Granatowsky. Seconded by Franco and Zepari.
Sure, I can comment briefly on this.
Please.
And this actually relates to the, the second item as well. There was some confusion in the retirement plans about vesting and eligibility. The non-union retirement plan referenced at one point a 10-year vesting period, and another point indicated a five-year vesting period. So in order to ensure that there was not confusion going forward and that our actuaries were handling it in the manner which the town had been handling it, we're clarifying that, yes, individuals who are vested after five years will be able to collect a pension at age 65 or later. And we asked that Hooker and Holcomb review that, they reviewed that and determined that the change, just because they weren't in sync with what the town's practice was, would result in a change to the, actually, the annual contribution to the retirement fund of $1,300. And it seemed appropriate to take care of at this point in time. And if I may, if I'm not out of order, I can explain the other one as well because it's similar in nature to this.
Okay, I'd prefer if we just get this one out of the way and then go to the next one.
Yep.
So we are on 2021-735, which is the front half of the page. We're containing our remarks to that item at this point. Counselor Bordelant, did you have a remark on 2021-735?
Yeah, again, I just want to state for the record, like, getting handouts the day of that are amended are just really hard when I put in two days' work prior to the meeting and the last week to review. I also, you know, per seeing this, you know, I think it's important that we act in good faith and that we're, we're giving ourselves time to review stuff. So this is really tough as, you know, like, we can't, we're handed this, and to really read it through at 10 o'clock, I feel like that's kind of not good policy in politics to be rushing through tonight on something that I didn't do my research or contact somebody on, you know, I do my due diligence as an elected official. And so I, I think that this is something that I think should be not discussed tonight so that we have time to send our comments if we chose, or whatever that may be.
For, for reference on that, what we had determined in the process of going back and forth last week was that the narrative didn't change, and the point didn't change, and the cost didn't change. What changed was saying, oh, this is what we actually really should do to change, to fix the problem. So the actual issue has not changed at all. So the actual issue has not changed, um, at all since it was provided to folks with their packet last week. What has changed is saying, oh, this is a way to fix the problem. It's not modifying this section in a particular manner. It's saying, oops, you know what, we really need to look at this in this manner and, and get the language correct. So it's, it's actually respectfully not a, not a change to, um, to what was in the packet.
Nothing else? Counselor Baumgartner?
Yeah, so in a nutshell, we are reducing the vesting period, uh, from 10 to five years?
Actually, for the non-union, it's not actually changing it. It's that the, the non-union provisions indicated in one point, oh, there was, you had to have 10 years and X, but at another point it actually already stated vesting was five years. Vesting was always five years, but now it's just clarifying that, yes, people who are vested at five years do get a pension and they have gotten pensions in the past. Um, so it's, it's a correction or clarification, um, within anything else for the non-union. It's not actually a change in the vesting.
And is there a reason, a reason we're doing this now?
Um, we, we've actually come up with it, um, on a few different occasions with, with folks and analyzing things. And it's cropped up again recently in looking at an employee who, um, had fewer than 10 years of service and non-union employee, but actually met the vesting requirements. And in fact, we went back then and said, oh, yes, this is how we've analyzed all this. We actually had analyzed it more carefully back in 2018 as well and were handling it as a policy matter and understood that by virtue of the language that was there that already said five years vesting, we were handling it in that manner. So right now it's, it's, it's just, it was clarifying with the actuaries to be sure that they were viewing it the same way and costing it out in the correct manner.
And, and the non-union people have been hired under the premise of the five years, so it's also, we wanna make sure we don't run into any issues and any legal issues later.
So they, so this is a recommendation on the part of the actuary?
Um, I, I, I think it's done, I would say in conjunction with the actuary to say, hey, this is what we've been doing. We have a five-year vesting policy, but look over here. Over here it says 10 years and, and 65, I think, to be able to be eligible for a pension. But that didn't make sense with a vesting period that was shorter than that and with the town's practice of actually providing the pensions under those circumstances. So, um, you know, it just is in, in terms of going through varieties of things, so this is, uh, appropriate to get this just clarified so that there's no confusion going forward that, yes, people who are, have five years and it says in the contract and the plan already are vested, that, yes, this is how we will calculate their retirement.
And but only for non-union?
Correct. So each, yes, so each, um, each other, uh, plan has its own vesting provision and in fact, um, all others except the non-union police, which we'll talk about, and the, and the union police, which we won't talk about, everybody else has a five-year vesting period. And it's actually said in here, it is five years. So that's not the change. The clarification is saying, yes, we all recognize actuaries included and cost this out correctly. We have this provision over here that says there's a five-year vesting. And yes, the town in fact has been providing pensions to people who have five years but not 10 years of vesting. And by that, I mean, it's a deferred retirement benefit. So if you have five years, um, here with the town, you'd still have to reach age 65 before you're able to collect.
And is, what is Director Landry's position on this? Has she vetted this as well?
Yes. Yeah. Fully in favor. It needs to be corrected. Well, we, none of us want, if someone to get to the retirement age and they've been promised something and now it's forgotten what's happened over the years. So this is really imperative to be fixed.
Thank you, John.
And just, just for clarification, this, when I'm looking at this, this matches what's on page, um, 86 of our packet in the bold type. This looks like it's pulled straight from there, the motion.
The current motion--
The current motion is matching what I'm seeing on page 86. That was in our packet in the bold face type with the red--
Right.
--red ink there. Um, Counselor Zepari?
I have my handout.
Yes, Counselor Zepari, go ahead, sir. You have the floor?
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to know if, uh, when a person terminates their employment, uh, for the people in this particular category, what are these, non-union police?
This is, um, non-union--
Will they terminate their employment before the vested period? Are they paid out the amount of money that's been put aside for them for their retirement up to that point?
Well, they, they get their contributions back.
Plus interest, right?
Uh, plus interest if they're vested.
I didn't hear you.
They get their contributions back? So whatever they--
They don't get the tax contribution?
Correct, they do not. And remember, this is not a defined contribution plan, it's a defined benefit plan. So that would be sort of an odd calculation anyway, but they get, they, because they're not vested, they just get their contributions back.
I see. Well, my feeling is that a person works for an employer and part of the compensation for that is, one, contributions to a retirement plan and, two, the pay that they get in their paycheck. And so when they leave, they should get, I, I, I'm in favor of this motion, by the way, but I think that when they leave, they have a right to what has been put aside for them because that was part of the compensation package that they had when they started. In any case, uh, I think that reducing the vesting period means that a person who has to move from this job to another, for whatever reason, still needs to provide for his or her retirement. And if we throw away five years of their productivity toward a retirement fund, uh, I think it's not fair to them. So I, I, I think we should approve this, uh, motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Counselor, um, Franco and Overy.
So what you're basically saying is after five years, you're 100% vested? So, correct me if I'm wrong, but after like one year, you're not at 10% and at--
Correct. No, if, if you've only been here for one year, you'll get back your contributions.
And nothing from the town?
Nothing else. And if you've been here, no, and again, the non-union retirement plan already had a non, a five-year vesting period in it. So that means you're vested in terms of you would be, you could either take your contributions back with interest if you left at, say, six years, or you could say, I'm gonna leave what I put in there. And that means that at age 65, for example, I will be eligible to collect an actual pension.
All right, so let me just clarify what, what's going on here, 'cause I'm a little confused. So you, the employee contributes into their retirement.
Correct.
And at, just say, four years, they leave. They get everything that they put in--
Correct.
--and the town put nothing in.
Right, because again, this is a defined benefit plan, not a defined contribution plan where the town's putting in, you know, a similar amount.
It's not like a 401-type thing.
So the town is not ever putting in anything? Is that what you're saying?
The town is, the town has to make a contribution to the pension plan to cover things and so, in general. And so here, what it's saying is to make this square, and so we don't have any issue from the actuary's perspective and from our perspective going forward, this again is with non-union, non-police, um, we're gonna clarify, even though it says already you get five years, if you keep your money there, you'll get a pension. Um, we're gonna clarify that provision and explain basically, and this is what you get, you know, to clarify, okay, this connects to this other provision of the contract. The actuary, um, determined that the cost of that, the cost of this correction or clarification was a $1,300 contribution, which means annually it gets added on. It's included then in the town's, um, contribution each year. So towards its pension obligation.
You would have to change the vesting period, um, which you'd have to cost out if you wanted to do it otherwise, to shorten it from five years.
Yeah.
And people are hired under this understanding.
Five years. It is five years now.
All right, so at five years, you're 100% vested, is what you're saying?
Correct.
And then you get the town contribution?
No, what you're, what you're 100% vested in--
What you're saying is that--
What you're 100% vested in is your contributions plus interest.
Plus interest.
Whatever, whatever has, you know, gathered on that money. Um, so you can have, you have the two options. You could either say, say you're there six years, so you're after the five-year vesting period, you could take your contributions plus interest, or you could elect a deferred retirement to say, I'm not gonna take any money right now, I'm gonna let it sit there until I meet the proper age requirement, at which point then I'll be able to collect, you know, an annual, a monthly pension from the town.
All right, and you're, and this is basically just administration that we're changing the wording to match the actual--
Correct, to, to, to match the practice and the language, the existing language about vesting.
So it's just administration correction?
Right.
Thank you.
Counselor Overy?
I was just wondering, we don't have very many people in a non-union, do we?
Uh, we do have a fair number of people who are, who are non-union. In fact, um, we have more non-union people than actually most municipalities, uh, as opposed to union folks.
Than a non-union?
Than a non-union, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Zepari, I see your hand and I'm not sure if that's leftover from last time.
Yes, it's leftover.
Okay, thank you. All right, so then, um, we will vote on 2021-735. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with seven counselors. Um, again, I need to ask, because it is after 10 o'clock, um, is there consensus to move on to 2021-738?
Yes.
I see no objection. I don't know whose. Counselor Melendez, could you read this one, do you think?
Yes.
Thank you. It's, um, on your paper in front of you on the backside.
I make a motion to amend section 10 of the retirement plan for non-union officers of the Town of Groton to reduce vesting from 10 years to five years and to authorize the town manager to incorporate language into the retirement plan for non-union officers to clarify the eligibility for a deferred pension benefit for employees who separate within five or more years of service.
Second.
So by Melendez and seconded by Franco?
So, uh, this one is somewhat similar, but here the police non-union retirement agreement provides for a 10-year vesting period currently. Uh, with the exception of, um, the union police, everybody else's vesting period is five years. Um, and in, in looking at this and considering it, look at the fact that we may want to try to attract, you know, folks from the outside to take these non-union police positions, whether it be chief, deputy, or captain going forward. And the attractiveness of decreasing the vesting period, um, is important. I think it goes to actually what, um, uh, Counselor was saying earlier about, uh, Zepari, excuse me, was saying earlier about this type of, of thing. And the second half of that motion is the same as the part that was just in the, um, plan, uh, the proposal for the non-union, non-police folks, where it says we will reduce the vesting period to five years and then clarify as well and make the language match up to be clear that, yes, people with five years are entitled to, um, a deferred retirement benefit. So this would put sort of the, the language concept on the same, um, stand as the non-union folks. So it would make the non-union the same as the non-union police in terms of vesting and pension eligibility. And, I apologize, in going through this, again, we had, um, the actuaries cost this out, um, and their estimate for this change would be, um, a $2,200 change to the actuarial, the determined contribution for each year.
Apologize to family members. Okay. I'm not seeing any discussion, so we'll vote on 2021-738. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with seven members. Um, this is now 2021-739, pension claim by former employee, and this is a potential executive session. Mr. Burt, are we moving ahead with this?
Yes.
Okay, the council is willing to move ahead with this at this point?
Yes.
Yes, okay, very good. So the motion in the packet says, um, I move at the Town Council Committee of the whole, along with the town manager, John Burton, and town attorney, Eileen Duggan, gone to executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 1260 for discussion of a pending claim and/or litigation related to a former employee's pension benefit. Was Chief Fissaro supposed to be included in this?
No.
No.
Okay. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Granatowski, seconded by Baumgartner. All those in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so we are in executive session and it is 10:19.
And there will be a motion after we come out.
There will be a motion.
So the video, so shot, I think, should remain in the building.
Okay, did, uh, Mr. Greeley, did you hear that?
Yeah.
... 10:40. And we are still on 2021-739. And I move, as for the town attorney, that the Town Council Committee of the whole, upon review of the cost and benefits associated with the proposed settlement of the former town employees' extra contractual claims regarding the calculation of pension benefits, has set forth an executive session except the proposed settlement. I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Granatowski, seconded by, I heard, Baumgartner first.
Didn't I get you that there?
Uh-uh. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with seven councilors. And that brings us to the end of new business. We have item six, other business.
Just one thing.
Councilor Boardman?
Yep. I just wanted to thank John for the email regarding the library. And I just wanted to see if there's any more updates on that because, you know, your report that you'd sent out, a couple people had contacted me. And when I went down there, there were books moved and things leaking, and the tiles were brown and dry, along with the mold on the doorway coming outside of the building. And that stuff has been there for quite some time. So I'm, I know in your email you stated there's not enough staff to kind of maintain that, and it takes some accountability internally. But if we could try to at least, once every three months, have someone just walk through and check. But it was concern, so I'm just curious as to what's going on. And because I am concerned about the health and well-being of staff and children going into that library in those conditions.
Yeah, the, and I did give a full update on it yesterday.
I appreciate you, you know, taking my concern.
Yeah, it was a cracked condenser, pipe on a AC unit that leaked. And they just had to, they just left it open for a little bit to make sure they caught the, that they fixed the leak. By the door, it was hit, it was just a little bit of mildew. The, it's in and out weather, just getting the wallpaper wet, and then underneath created some mildew. They do go through it quite, I mean Greg, I said out Greg's procedures, they go through quite often. But no one's better placed than the people in the department to catch little things. We, but, yeah, and we do take care of everything. I mean, they do a fantastic job, so I don't want to characterize like they don't. Public Works is the best, they don't want to lose staffing there.
No, and once again, my bringing this to you initially, and then you following up with the email, wasn't criticizing. I mean, we're elected to take on concerns of the community, and when people say the roof is leaking, as a town councillor, you have to ask the question. So it's not the roof, in fact, it's the AC unit.
Right.
And all the tiles will be replaced. And any damage, what about to the rug and the walls, that it's, water's coming down?
Yeah, we'll trust Public Works to do that, yep.
Okay, great. Councilor Frankum?
I just wanted to notate that next Tuesday is election day in front of us local politicians.
And our next council will be on Wednesday for everybody watching.
That's great that we moved it this time.
And Tammy Natche Burge just stole my last sentence, so.
Sorry.
What was that? Thanks.
And that schedule is set every, every, every fall, we set the schedule for the next year. Councilor Baumgartner?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm out of here. You said we scheduled something at the last, I missed what you said.
We, the schedule is set every, at the end of every year for the following year, so that November 3rd date was set the prior last year. So we'll be doing that again, I can't remember which day it is.
Usually toward the end of the year.
Probably ninth.
Ninth?
Probably, yeah.
And then I was going to follow up on that, all the polling locations are the same. But when, when, is this technically under new business? Are we under new business now?
We are on other business.
Other business. Yeah, just, I think it would be good to have a conversation about with, if, now that the state legislature, they'll be voting on new congressional, state legislative districts, about voting districts. And I wasn't sure when that conversation would take place, because I know they're wrapping up that process. And if that would be something that presumably the next council would deal with, or is that something that is outside of the purview of our council?
You mean voting districts?
Yeah.
And redistricting?
Basically the RTM districts. Because we can't establish them until the state legislature's done with their.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then it's governed, well, the districts don't change the number of people who.
I'm not familiar with the process myself.
Yeah.
Is it, which is tied to the census? Because it is based on number of voters, correct? So I'm not sure if that's one that we can look at at any time and redistrict, or if it's tied to a certain specific time period when it is reevaluated, kind of like the general assemblies do.
And they're tied to the state legislative districts.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So we're, Councilor O'Bree is leaving us at, what time is it?
And then, and then lastly, also about now with the local municipal election, you know, being on next Tuesday, if we can discuss moving the polling location.
We've lost.
Some of the polling locations back to their original locations, or new schools are going to be built.
No, form six.
Councilor Zepary's gone as well? All right, so we can't, we can't vote on anything, or we've lost quorum, but you can just wrap up if you want, and then we can.
Yeah, if we can discuss the, the potentially moving voting locations back to where they used to be. For example, there was a voting location. There was a voting location located at Westside Middle School, and it was moved to Zabirsky House. And I hear from so many residents saying it should be moved back to the elementary school, more centrally located in that district. And then with S.B. Butler coming up, potentially coming up, fine, will definitely not be utilized as a school, explore whether, you know, it's appropriate to utilize color as a new voting location, and so on and so forth. So just wanted to put that.
So that should be, next council should be working on that.
Don't forget about Mary Morrison.
We've lost the quorum, so I don't even know if we do a motion to adjourn, but I will move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions?
Go ahead and vote.
I don't know, we don't have any house. Because I know if I don't, you know what's going to happen? Someone will say something. Section 1049 adjourned. Thank you, everybody, be well, keep wearing your masks, be safe, guys.